Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call to order the Monday, July 28, 2025, 6 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Special Meeting. The invocation will be led by Pastor Juno Smalley of New Life Community Church. Please rise if you are able, Pastor Smalley.
Well, if we were in my church on Sunday, I would start off with two pictures of my wonderful grandsons, who would have added some cuteness to the night, but we're not, so I'm just gonna pray. Let's pray. Creator God, we know that you are here. We are grateful that you are just not in a building on a Saturday or Sunday or Thursday or whatever day, but that you're with us. You're with us in our homes and in our schools. You're with us wherever we work and you're here in this meeting. And so, thank you. Thank you for those who are dedicated to our city, who try to weed through all the stuff and make wise decisions that will move Cerritos forward. And obviously, Lord, there are people here who will disagree, and I do pray that the disagreement will be done respectfully, knowing that everybody brings something different to the table. And it's yet in those differences that we are made stronger. And so, help us to work together to continue to create a city that people will be moving toward and into to raise their families or to settle down or to retire. And so, thanks again for those who commit many hours researching and digging up stuff that they can bring the facts to the table and present an accurate picture of what it means to move forward. And so, keep us grateful. Keep us grateful for a room to meet in, for air conditioning, for our vehicles that drive us around town, for the lack of gun sounds or of tragedies happening. Just give us grateful hearts in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please continue standing. Thank you, Pastor Smalley. Tonight, the City of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council stands with our law enforcement partners in mourning the loss of three members of the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, the brothers of our deputies here in the Cerritos Sheriff's Station. On July 18, an explosion at a training facility claimed the lives of Detective Joshua Kelly Eklund, Detective Victor Limas, and Detective William Osborne with the department's arson explosives detail. The City of Cerritos sends our deepest condolences to their families, friends, and colleagues during this challenging period. Please join me in a moment of silence in honor of the service, dedication, and ultimate sacrifice of Detectives Joshua Kelly Eklund, Detective Victor Limas, and Detective William Osborne. Thank you. Now, I will call on AYSO Region 54 Boys U-10 Team Extra to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the Witches of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna meet you guys later, but go ahead and say your names right now and how old you are.
Hello, my name is Jackson and mine, eight years old.
Hello, my name is Tyler and I'm nine years old.
Hello, my name is Motheran and I'm nine years old.
Hello, my name is Joshua and I'm eight years old.
Thank you, boys. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Hong.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Polito.
Present.
Council and Agency Member Say.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem and Vice Chair Johnson.
Present.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama.
Here. The next item is 5A. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. For agenda item 5A, we are pleased to welcome Representative from the School District, Board of Education President Ernie Nishi, who has been invited to provide the community with an update regarding recent actions and activities of the district. So with that, I will invite Board Member Nishi to come to the podium to provide some remarks.
Welcome, ABC President Ernie Nishi.
Thank you, Mayor Yokuyama, and thank you for inviting me to come in and provide an important update as to the status of our schools. I don't think this is, I think this is probably the first time I've ever done this in this capacity, ever. And I think that bodes well for our relationship between the city and the schools because our relationship is key. This city has been historic in supporting our schools, supporting all of the things that we see here, the gym, the pools, the, all of these great things that the city has provided to the schools, has been coming from the city, and we could not be as successful without your support. You deserve a report because after all, the residents, if they see one part of us not doing well, they're gonna look at every other source and they're not gonna necessarily look to point and differentiate. So you need to know what's happening. So I'd like to give you a report that for the last 11 years since 2014, since actually some of you were actually on the school board and prior to the failed AA bond, ABC has experienced declining enrollment. According to Davis Demographics, similar to all similarly sized districts, every single district in Southern California has experienced declining enrollment except three. Those districts being Irvine, which is slightly growing because they have space, Downey and Glendale. But basically, the attributed causes are all very similar. It's birth rate declines, it's the lack of affordable housing, it's general migration issues, and these specific factors have reduced enrollment across the board. In 2018, ABC approved the BB bond to improve our facilities. And immediately following the approval of that, there were many concerns that were expressed by the community, one of which is the issue of declining enrollment. By that time, enrollment had been declining for almost five years roughly. And immediately, we commissioned a study, a demographic study, Davis demographic, to address that declining enrollment issue. And they told us the story that we kind of know today, which is based upon birth rates, migration, housing, the difficulty of everything that's part of Southern California. What makes our city and country great is also part of what keeps our decline. Davis Demographics predicted decline in enrollment. So in response, the district didn't just stop and worry about that. Actually, some, again, some of the members of your city council acted, and they recruited a public information officer so we can market ABC outside of our district. We moved district enrollment to the southern aspect of our district so that way people from the south can actually see the great schools that they have in their area. We added new programs. Councilmember Stay was instrumental in, and me and her were working with a dual-language Mandarin class. We also have Spanish dual-language immersion. So all these factors, we're trying to boost our enrollment. We provided amenities. We created a mural in the south part of our district. My daughter actually did that. Created theaters. We have robotics. We have community theater. We put monies towards these things. We acquired grants. We improved Head Start, so instead of a half-day program, it became a full-day program. And I think that has also helped us. We implemented a fully robust TK program, which gets the kids in early. Again, all in an effort to improve enrollment. Also, as part of BB, we wanted to make sure the kids were safe. That was a promise that we made to the residents and our community. So some of the things that we did immediately, right off the bat, was to put in security systems to make sure that we don't have active intruders coming in on our kids. We also wanted to have safety in terms of physical safety. So some of our playgrounds that had been decrepit and actually hurting kids and creating lawsuits, we actually repaired them and replaced them and made them sun safe. And we've done some of those major things. Not a lot of money went into that, but some. Unfortunately, all these efforts was not enough. We are still experiencing a decline. We had COVID in 2020. We received some additional monies for that. But in 2023, the facts are that we cannot continue to have the high level of education that our residents expect and have the same number of facilities. It just doesn't work. So in 2023, we approved an ad hoc facilities committee of stakeholders. People that were appointed from our community were selected to go through an analysis, and they were supposed to determine the appropriate facilities for the appropriate enrollment. They were to address the academic issues that arise from a small enrolled school. They were to look at data, and not just random data, but they were to actually look at demographic studies, housing element, your housing element, all of the housing elements of all of our areas. Presuming 100% success, what can we predict in the next five to seven years? We got community opinions through town halls, and we even commissioned another data survey to find out. Well, we did the survey in 2018, maybe things have changed in 2022. Unfortunately, that did not change. Following a review of the data, there were several meetings, but in May 2024, the committee did not approve any recommendations except not to consolidate schools. No other recommendations were provided regarding the analysis relating to the declining enrollment were approved. So, we appointed a commission, we had studies, and we have no results in 2024. So following our fiduciary duty, we said we need to continue, we can't just not have a solution. We have to figure it out. So we paid a consultant approximately $22,000 after an RFP, and it's hard to find these consultants, but we found one, Schoolworks, to address the issue of declining enrollment. The initial report was presented in May and considered over the course of the next three meetings. So it wasn't an immediate thing that we said, we got a report, we'll make a decision. We actually spent several different meetings to go over it. The Schoolworks proposal was comprehensive. It included consolidation of Aloha in the West, Juarez in the North, Ferguson in the South, and Stowers in the East. It addressed, even though the first commission did not really consider middle school, they never got to that point because they made a conclusion. This group also figured that we don't have very much kids in our middle schools. We had a middle school with only 290 kids. What can you offer at middle school with that few kids? You can't. It's difficult. Whereas some kids had a large and robust enrollment where we can offer theater, TV production, bands, sports. Other schools were struggling to provide the basics. It's not their fault, but that's what happened. So they provided another recommendation that was very different. Because we needed to have a robust middle school, because we only have four middle schools, and closing one is not really an option, otherwise we totally lose that particular area. They made a projection or a recommendation that we go six, seven, eight. This would make that group slightly larger, making those facilities more efficient. They also provided a recommendation regarding Whitney. But to be honest, that was an extra, and we did not put that on any subsequent agenda. So on our next agenda, after going over the report, having a 7-0 vote to keep on considering these issues, the subsequent move was to consider the recommendations by Schoolworks, except the Whitney solution to add additional students and things like that. Whitney would still go six, seven, eight, but the recommendation of moving Whitney to Stowers wasn't on the table yet. We still have time to think about it and decide because they also had a timed approach to it. So instead of doing all this right now and very quickly and not having a well-timed program, we decided to do it over two years. The first three schools would be done in the first year, which is feasible, but the conversion from six, seven, eights, redoing the district boundaries, doing the bus schedules, doing all of the considerations of, do we want to have a Whitney change? Do we want to do different things for Whitney? Do we want to have increased enrollment? That was given two years for us to actually implement. So it was a pretty good plan. At least, that was the plan that I voted on. We held a public hearing. We gave our community full measure. We went till almost, gosh, it was 11:30. It was really late. But ultimately, our board decided not to make any, did not follow the recommendations of Schoolworks. And as president of the board, when the board makes a decision, as you know, as a mayor, I don't have unilateral power to do whatever I want. I must follow the mandate of the board. I cannot go further. Staff cannot do further actions in terms of consolidating schools. That would be forbidden. We are allowed to continue to do what we were doing in the past, which is we are continuing to pursue grants. And we have won some grants, but as you know, there's been some challenges with the federal government in terms of taking away, or not taking away, they held our money. We're continuing to support programs the best we can. We're continuing to address the challenges, which affects our Asian and Latino students as ICE is enforcing their mandate just outside of our schools. They're not allowed on our schools, but they are allowed to operate outside of our schools, and that's what they're doing. And it has directly affected our summer school enrollment. We had a 50% drop. These are the kids that need it the most, and they're not coming. We're trying to adapt to that. We're doing some online learning. We're doing some home visits. We're doing a lot of things that we can to get them to come back because we really can't afford them to not get educated. We need them educated. They are our future. So we'll continue the efforts, but we don't know how that's going to affect our fall enrollment. We'll find out in about 15 or 16 days, how that's gonna affect our enrollment. We're going to potentially face a challenge with Head Start because now we're gonna have to ask potentially for their citizenship to make sure that they're eligible. We don't know. The law is changing. We will follow whatever the law requires, but that may also affect our future enrollment. We will continue to mitigate the situation regarding a rule called 218. And this is a law which, as you might know, as a public entity, has affected us, which extended the statute of limitations for sexual abuse well before any of us were in public office and before insurance on those issues were available. I mourn the victims of these horrendous crimes. But I also mourn for today's students that must suffer the consequences of yesteryear's criminals. We are today faced with multimillion-dollar potential liabilities. To date, we paid out $6 million in claims. As a comparison, Morona Valley School District is paying $45 million out of their budget. And LA County is paying $4 billion. We're gonna do our best to mitigate those issues, but those are challenges that we have. In relation to the declining enrollment, which means less money, we have instituted austerity measures. So start off, nobody's getting a raise. Our travel budget was cut 50%. Admin was cut 20%. Councils and unfield positions, we need them, but they were also cut. We cut $5.7 million, and we're cutting away from schools. But ultimately, that is not sustainable. The Schoolworks proposal would have saved The Schoolworks proposal would have saved conservatively $2 to $3 million. But that's not the purpose of the Schoolworks proposal. The purpose of the Schoolworks proposal is primarily for education. We still have a mandate to keep the cuts away from our kids. But even in our schools in Cerritos, you're going to hear parents talk about, why do we have a combination class? And quite frankly, it's because certain grade levels don't have enough kids. And we can't not have enough kids in a classroom. Combination classes means a teacher is teaching two different grade levels, which is challenging for the teacher. Kids are probably able to adapt to it, but the teachers definitely have challenges in terms of time. We still have a mandate to improve our low enrollment, but it's challenging because we need to have collaboration opportunities for the teachers and it's not there. Even something simple as reading Olympics or science fairs are hard to, to implement because it requires teachers to volunteer their time and they aren't there in the low enrollment schools. Theater and band are affected despite different revenue sources. I, I know we get monies from the state for this, but all of these things are affected by a low enrollment. So I'm sure you came here and wanted to hear me, how can Cerritos help? Right? No, we're not asking for money. That's not what I came here for. Thank you for asking me to come here because what we need to do together is to collaborate. We need to meet. We need to see where we don't have resources. Maybe you are doing a similar function than us and we can share in some of those things. We have places to put pickleball courts and I know you're creating some for our residents. That's something that maybe all of us can appreciate. Maybe we can't afford a new theater at Cerritos High School. It's, it's super old. But Cerritos has a wonderful and beautiful facilities related to theaters. And our kids may not even know the difference that we have financial challenges if the city is able to be a partner with us in some of these additional things. And of course, we have to pay for it. Housing. So we thank you for creating housing. And that's really important. I know sometimes a housing element is just a plan, but we need it actually implemented. Whether it's affordable or not affordable, we need the two and three bedroom unit apartments. If it is a one bedroom unit, it is very difficult to have kids in a one bedroom unit. So to the extent that you can encourage whatever, whatever tools that you have at your disposal to have two and three bedroom units, that would be greatly appreciated by the school district. It will strengthen our community. It will make things much better because we'll have a good housing stock. I'll continue to keep you up to date. I, I have not been here a lot. When I was at liaison, I did come, but as president, I've only been here once, that is today. But we will continue our discussions. We'll have discussions privately and publicly and however you want. But I'm looking forward to working with you to ensure that the issues regarding low enrollment don't affect our residents as, as much as possible. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm, I'm open, as is Mr. Smith.
Can you please introduce who's here with you today?
Uh, Scott Smith, our, our PIO.
Thanks, thanks for coming, Scott. And, you know, it was important, I felt it was important to our residents of Cerritos, our families of Cerritos, to get an update about the status of our ABC school district because of the the vote to not approve the consolidation and reconfiguration plan in your, in your June meeting. So thank you for accepting the invitation to come and inform our Cerritos families because our Cerritos ABC families are the biggest group of a city's families in the ABC school district. And I'm going to let my colleagues ask any questions or make any comments, okay? So council member Say, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any question. I just have a comment. I deeply emphasize part with the family, parents and school staff and your board members. It is a tough decision. This is very emotionally about the consolidated state of the school. And I wish you best and I know you know how to handle it as president in there. And that's all I can say. As a former ABC school board member, I understand what you're going through right now. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mayor.
Nobody gets elected that really wants to serve their community by closing schools. It is the most heart wrenching thing. It keeps me up at night. I literally, my blood pressure is way up here because I care about this community. And and sometimes you have to make hard decisions when kids are crying. But I have to remember that there's a key thing that we need to remember. Facilities don't educate kids. It's the teachers. It's our staff. It's people that educate. When, when COVID was happening, I think we found out that we could educate kids without the location. But we couldn't do it without the teachers and the staff. The kids love them. And that's how we as humans interact and learn and, and build our next generation. Our, our city becomes stronger because of our schools. Thank you.
Council member Hong, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to say yes. ABC School Board is very important in our community. Our city is very beneficial because we have a very nice school board. A lot of people, immigration, immigrants, they all come over to our city because they want a better education for their, their kids. So I really, I understand how difficult you're facing right now. And I appreciate that you are all working very hardly to try to make this, to come up with a solution. And I wish we can find the best solution for our city because I know it's not easy to facing, like you keep on losing money for so many years. How are you going to come back, you know? And, and also it's hard to face all the parents, you know, all the students. So I want to say thank you for your hard working and keep on working. And hopefully we can come out with a better solution for everybody. Thank you.
And thank you, council member Hong, for your support. It's the community that's the most important, the parents. We, we're just a district, but when we work together, we're more powerful. So thank you.
Council member Polito, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have some questions and some comments. First, I wanted to say, uh, thank you to our mayor for inviting, uh, school board president, the Honorable Ernie Nishi, uh, to come in, inform the community of the crisis situation that's going on in our local schools. Uh, and also thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining in tonight. I imagine you're here to make yourself available to any questions that might arise that you can handle too. So I want to say thanks to, to Ernie for making himself available on the afternoon of May 31st, where we had a very robust, thorough, aggressive conversation about the proposed splitting of Whitney into Whitney High School and Whitney Middle School. And I appreciated the opportunity to, to share with you my vehement opposition to that proposal. And also to express that many members of the community and former members of the community have gone far and wide after graduating from Whitney, that they were in shock and dismay at this proposal to address declining enrollment when Whitney is bursting at the seams of people wanting to get into it. So it, it seemed exactly the opposite, what to do, to kill the spirit Whitney by splitting it and taking away the uniqueness of a seven through 12th school that was, that is focused on a, a college prep curriculum and has since expanded that to include career tech ed with the establishment of the Whitney High School Multimedia Arts Center. So I was at a loss for answers to the questioning community. And so I thank you for clarifying the proposal and also for, I guess, a subsequent decision by the board to not proceed with that as one of the options that were put forth by the, the consultant. I also wanted to say that as a former school board member, I am intimately aware of the ongoing challenge of declining enrollment. In fact, while I was there, tried to partner with this agency, the City of Cerritos, when we had a redevelopment agency here, in order to use the underutilized property where the ABC headquarters is located at still, to develop housing that would be workforce in nature, that potentially could have brought in young families who were in law enforcement or local teachers, who could then have their children attend local schools to add to enrollment, as well as really a nod to the, the workforce who serves and protects us, as well as educates the next generation of, of members of the community. I was disheartened when that, when that happened, that four homeowners associations unified and then submitted a lawsuit against that proposed joint development for Questa Villas. That would also have provided a $3 million annual investment into the local schools to help alleviate the budget challenges of the school district. That of course is all old news. But at the same time, this city had proposed an overlay zone in the Cerritos Industrial Park that would give property owners in the industrial park area the option. It wouldn't mandate it, but it would give them the option in order to convert their properties into housing. But because of the unintended consequences of that lawsuit by those four homeowners associations, that killed the spirit that was driving the attempt to provide an option to those property owners in the Cerritos Industrial Park area. And so a moratorium was adopted by previous council. I wasn't on the council at that time, but that, I thought that was foolish. I, I thought that was unnecessary. It was bad enough that they converted the, the project from workforce housing to senior housing. And then ultimately, because of the passage of time, that project died. But the proposed overlay zone in the industrial park was killed also because there was a moratorium enacted. So here we are now, more than a decade later, in a worse condition. So my question is, not, not for the two of you gentlemen, thank you. You've answered a lot of questions, but to our city manager. What, what is the status of that originally proposed overlay zone? And what would we need to do? This, this council needs to do, what type of action would we need to take tonight in order to bring that back before us so that we could study it and see if that might be an option so that we could start converting some of the underutilized property in the industrial park area to its highest and best use, most needed urgently by this community to develop some housing with, I, I understand it, with two to three units minimum, so that we could get some families with school age children in, into this community?
If I may, thank you, council member. The overlay zone that was, was referenced, that was pursued quite a number of years ago. There's been no action taken on that since that time. I believe it was close to 20 years ago. But with the recent housing element that was adopted by the city council, and the city council has identified several properties for rezoning for residential purposes. We will, in the coming months, be bringing forth to the city council the rezoning actions that are called for in the housing element. They include several properties, one of which is an industrial area along Valley View by the five freeway. That is by far the largest property, a set of properties identified in the housing element for a significant number of housing units. So the idea is that with the adoption of, of the housing element and the subsequent rezoning, that would bring forth new units, new housing units, that have the potential to bring forth additional students to the school district. So that is coming, that is coming before you in the, in the, in the next few months.
That's great, but what can we do to revisit the originally proposed overlay zone for the Cerritos Industrial Park for housing?
We could, that, that was initiated by certain property owners and those property owners have since transferred. So I'm, I'm not sure what, to what extent there's interest by new owners in pursuing that. The city does have the power to rezone properties, but it's best if it's done in concert consultation with the underlying owners. We can start by having conversations and see what interest there is among existing owners. But we are currently moving forward fairly quickly with the rezoning that was referenced for close to 1,900 units in the city.
Great. Could it be possible that the agenda item that went before council, that they approved the moratorium, be provided as a memo to our council members? So we could consider whether or not we should explore that as one of a whole host of options to develop housing in Cerritos?
Yes, we'd be happy to provide information to the council with a memo with the previous agenda reports that helped explain what occurred.
Wonderful. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Council member Polito. Also, I thank you for spending the time with me on that day because based upon our discussions, yes, I decided that it would not be prudent to put that particular item regarding Whitney on the agenda. It would be very distracting and doesn't meet our goals. Unfortunately, nothing got approved. But I thought that adding that issue would even add more issues to our agenda. The second part regarding housing. So housing elements are important, but they actually have to be implemented. So in terms of the school district efforts to, to do this, we have actually had on our agenda, uh, previous discussions regarding some of the land that we currently own. So that's subject to closed session, so we cannot disclose some of that. But some of the land adjacent to the school district will be on our closed session agenda in the coming weeks. And other land that we own will be discussed. And the state of California has made it easier to build housing in California. So we will be potentially taking advantage of revenue streams or other things that relate to how the city, state of California enables us. And I'm hoping that the city can support us, not financially, but maybe in zoning or other density issues that, that might affect any type of development that occur on those particular sites, to the extent that you control that. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Polito. Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Ernie, and first to Scott as well for coming tonight and sharing your presentation. My question really is just a follow up. You know, I sent a letter to the district on May 19th with certain questions, followed by a response from the district and again on June 10th, which I have not received a response. So if you could just please follow up on that. Thank you.
So I want to be clear. In terms of the BB funds, we have spent money for our kids' safety. Based upon the mandate from our community, we understood that, um, active intruders had been happening at a regular rate. And part of the approval of the bond was to make our kids safe. And unfortunately, that's not something you wait five years from now because if you have an incident prior to that, the parents, nobody will understand why, if we had the money, we didn't address safety. So to answer some of the questions, we have put money into some of our elementary schools to address surveillance issues. We have put money into elementary schools to improve the safety. Some of the walls that you see at some of our schools are a direct approximate result of the bond that everybody here approved and is currently paying. So I thank the residents for enabling us to make our, our kids safer. And yes, we spent the monies at some of these other schools. But that's, those are not funds that are going to be wasted because anybody is going to need safe facilities. We improved some playgrounds. That's a different kind of safety. It's a safety in terms of making sure our kids don't get injured. And we don't want to be incurring personal liability. I'm an attorney. And it kills me when somebody sues us over something that we could have fixed. fixed. So, to the extent that we can make our playgrounds safer, and not as, they were almost 30 years old, some of them. We did expend a few, some monies towards those particular facilities. Those are actions that I'm very proud of, quite frankly. We fought for our kids to have facilities. But all the monies that we actually spent primarily have started, we started at the very beginning with high school. We started with, actually with Whitney, and Whitney got the Brand New Science Center. We finished the high schools. GARR got a beautiful theater, and then we moved to middle schools. Middle schools didn't get a lot, I'll be honest. It doesn't look that much better, but it's something. It's something we can be proud of. Some media centers got improved. Some safety issues were improved. Just basic things got fixed there. And now we are working on our elementary schools. The first school that we worked on was, I believe, Bragg?
Correct.
Bragg. And there, we've done some major improvements there. The fear is that if we improve a school and we consolidate, and that's why I thought it was prudent for us to make a decision sooner rather than later, and to, instead of have our resources spread out amongst many different locations to specifically target the kids that have the most need in the specific communities where they're directly going to be affected. And so, that is our aim. That is how we plan to do this, but, and I apologize if it sounded like we're having a financial emergency. That's not the case, and Tuan will tell you the same thing. We have been very prudent with our monies. We have not been, we have not gone on all these expenditures, but there is a timeline, and it's not infinite. It is short. We have about, I feel that we need to make, we've made a decision not to do anything, but I think we need to make major changes within the year, and we need to make sure that the city knows that we're making these changes, so you're not blindsided by major changes that we make, and that's part of the communication process. So, thank you for those questions, councilmember.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, I just wanted to thank you for coming again, Scott and President Ernie. This is an important issue, and I want to make it clear, I want to thank you, President Ernie Nishi, and I want to thank Clerk Tatiana Yokoyama-Bui, and I want to thank school board member Su Yu for courageously voting to take action to deal head-on with this declining enrollment that is going to be detrimentally affecting and negatively affecting the education of our kids, our thousands of kids, including our thousands and thousands of Cerritos families who attend the ABC schools. And, you know, you mentioned diplomatically, you mentioned that you have to follow the board's decision, and, you know, I do the same thing as the mayor for a council decision, but it is the case that it was a four to three, four to three vote to not approve the consolidation and reconfiguration plan. And interestingly, I'm just pointing out the fact that the three that voted to approve the consolidation and reconfiguration plan were the three trustees from the Cerritos trustee areas, representing, elected by our Cerritos families. And, you know, the same things, a similar thing happened, is happening here in Cerritos where we have to deal with our budget constraints and deal with budget deficits. We can't just ignore, the council cannot just ignore when we have budget deficits. We have to figure out how we address that budget deficits, and I thank and applaud my council members who on June, on June, in June, at our budget approval meeting, we made hard decisions, and we made hard decisions and adjustments and cuts that we reduced a 2.9 million budget deficit to approximately 400,000, because we had to make tough decisions. We had to take action. We can't do nothing. We can't just do inaction, and I thank my council colleagues for unanimously voting together to approve the budget because of the recognition that we needed to take action and cut services, cut some services, make some adjustments in our city, that in the short term, maybe there'll be some disappointment, but in the years ahead, the count, the residents will be in a more financially secure city that was financially responsible. So, again, you've been very diplomatic and respectful to the district and to your school board, but I was surprised that even though the declining enrollment is certain, it is clear that, you know, as of the 2015, 2016 school year, the district enrollment was over 20,000. It was 20,863, and the projection is that in 2000, in the, for the 2029 school year, the enrollment is going to be 15,542. So, you're dealing with a decline of over a quarter of the school district, 26%. And, it's clear that the district needs to take action to maintain the high quality of education that the ABC families expect. That's why they want their kids to go to ABC schools in the ABC school district, to get that high quality, that high caliber education. But we can't ignore the fact that in less than five years, the enrollment will have declined by over, by 26%. And the agenda report for this school consolidation and reconfiguration plan also informed the public and informed me that this plan would save 3.4 million dollars once fully implemented. Is that still the understanding?
That is.
I know it's beside the point because it was, it was rejected, but those savings could have gone into make sure we have the high caliber education and the programs and services that you were talking about needed to be cut because of the declining enrollment. Is that how much money we missed out saving, 3.4 million dollars?
That is correct. It is 3.4. It could be slightly less, but, so, Mayor, my job is never to give up, right? I can't say, oh, we can't do anything. We will adapt. We'll try to figure it out. We, there may be facility sharing agreement. The community will tell us what they want, and we will listen, hopefully, and make decisions accordingly. It didn't happen in June, but that's not to say that the matter could not potentially be brought up again, just as the city council follows the Brown Act and Roberts Rules of Order. The school district can indicate that they've made a mistake. It is very possible. But until that time, I will still follow the mandate of my school board, do what we can to address the issues, the reduced monies, the reduced federal monies that we know is coming down the pike in 2026, 27 school year regarding our migrant aid program and our Head Start program and our Title I funds. We'll do our best.
Well, you know.
And we'll need your help.
Well, we're working together. You know, I'm surprised that the school consolidation and reconfiguration plan, which was studied and recommended by Schoolworks, and it was, you know, recommended by Superintendent Zietlow, and her staff recommended it. Unfortunately, it was a three to four vote, but thank you for informing us about what is to come. You're going to work to keep providing the high caliber, top-notch education to our families within the reality of the declining enrollment that the ABC school district is facing, potentially over five years, 26% declining enrollment, missing out on 3.4 million dollars in savings. I wish you the best. Please feel free to reach out to Cerritos and Public City Manager Robert Lopez and the city council for whatever we can do to help our ABC families and ABC students be as successful as possible.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you to everybody. The next item is 5B presentations. Testing. AYSO 50th anniversary. Come on, boys, come on up here. Thank you for doing the pledge of allegiance. The Cerritos City Council is honored to recognize the Cerritos City Council is honored to recognize AYSO Region 54's 50th anniversary. Region 54 has been proudly providing generations of local youth with a high-quality soccer experience that is firmly rooted in community, character, and development. AYSO's core mission is to deliver a world-class youth soccer program that enriches children's lives built on six foundational philosophies. Everyone plays, balanced teams, open registration, positive coaching, good sportsmanship, and player development. With an organization that is 100% volunteer-run, many of the players, coaches, and volunteers are Cerritos residents, as well as former AYSO players giving back to the program that helped shape their early years. The city is grateful for the many contributions that AYSO Region 54 has provided to our community for 50 years, and the city council is happy to congratulate them on this milestone anniversary. Let's give AYSO Region 54 a hand for their 50th anniversary. So, is somebody the coach? Is some, okay, what's your name?
Mike.
Mike.
Thank you.
So, Mike is going to introduce himself and say a few words.
Thank you. Hello, my name's Mike Switchow. I am the coach administrator, as well as a coach and a referee for the City of Cerritos, AYSO 54. Our fearless leader Veronica is the regional commissioner. We just wanted to say thank you for recognizing us, and we greatly appreciate that. We are hoping and looking forward to trying to work in conjunction with the City of Cerritos for us to get fields and availability for things like that. That's what normally, and you guys are pretty good about helping us out with those things. So, with no further ado, I'd just like to let these guys say hello and tell them what they appreciate about it. Thank you all.
And what school you go to?
Hello, my name is Jackson. And I go to Comperz Elementary in Lakewood, California. That's good. I like it.
Hello, my name is Tyler. I go to Buena Terra Elementary, and I, I think AYSO is really fun to play soccer.
Hello, my name is Joshua, and I go to Pendleton Elementary, and I think AYSO is good.
My name is Matherin, and I go to Carver Academy, and I think AYSO is a wonderful place to learn soccer.
Very good. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, if I can please present the City of Cerritos proclamation to Cerritos AYSO Region 54 in honor of your 50th anniversary, and if I can ask my council colleagues to join us for a group photo.
Yes, of course.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys for what you did.
Former player.
Yes.
34 years ago. You can come down if you want. It's up to you. All right, make sure everyone's in the scene.
Here, look for boys. You guys hold this.
Hold it, but don't cover your faces. A little bit lower.
Got a short ear.
One more.
There you go. Yes, thank you.
Five. One, two, one, two, three, one, four, one more, one, two, five.
Thank you all.
Veronica, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Keep in touch.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Yes, you know, exactly.
It's Mike.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you guys. Let me know if you're getting enough field time.
That's all we ever gotta try. That's our biggest, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Boys, stay up here. I also want to call up the representative from our California State Senator Tony Strickland's office. Maddie has a special certificate of recognition.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me. I just wanted to quickly present the certificate on behalf of State Senator Tony Strickland. Obviously, 50 years is a big deal, so we wanted to make a nice frame for you there, and just congratulations on all the work you've done. Obviously, kids love it. You're promoting teamwork, you know, teaching them to interact with other kids, and obviously promoting a healthy lifestyle, and congratulations again, and thank you for the impact you've had on the Cerritos community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Five photos again. One, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Well done. Thank you so much. Thank you again.
Okay, everybody stay here. Maddy, thank you. Everybody stay here. And then we're also, we also have a representative from our California Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva's office, Joe Pack.
Thank you, Mayor. Our office doesn't have a lot of budget, so I don't have it framed, okay? It's just a piece of paper, but it means the same thing, okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Here, gentlemen, hold that between you. Let's get all these at the same time here.
Five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all. Business Spotlight. Pankel Aerospace Systems, come on up.
What's your name?
Manny.
Manny.
Nice to meet you.
Horst.
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 Horst and Manny.
Since 2000, Pankel Aerospace Systems has become an industry leader in aerospace manufacturing, proudly serving the global aviation market from its facility located in Cerritos. Specializing in the design and manufacture of high-performance components for both defense and commercial aerospace programs, Pankel Aerospace Systems plays a critical role in advancing the safety, reliability, and performance of aircraft worldwide. Pankel Aerospace Systems components are featured on globally recognized programs such as the Blackhawk, H-60, SpaceX Falcon, and Bell V-22 Osprey. With ongoing development supporting the next generation of aircraft, including the Bell V-280 Valor and other future platforms. Pankel Aerospace Systems' decision to establish operations in the City of Cerritos was driven by the city's strategic location, excellent infrastructure, and strong support for advanced manufacturing. The Cerritos facility employs approximately 70 highly skilled individuals and serves as a crucial, a critical hub for North American operations. The company's continued growth in the region reflects the strength of the Cerritos community, its skilled workforce, and the city's ongoing investment in fostering a thriving business environment. The City of Cerritos is very lucky to have in our city the Business Spotlight selection for this month. Pankel Aerospace Systems. And I'm happy to meet Manny and Horst. Thank you for coming, gentlemen, and I'll hand you the mic and please introduce yourselves and tell us about Pankel Aerospace Systems here in Cerritos.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Manuel Cruz. I'm known as Manny at where I work at Pankel Aerospace. I've been working with Pankel Aerospace since I was a young man and started working in the year 2007. I started my career as a receptionist and over the years, Pankel Aerospace has allowed me to develop my skills in my career. Pankel Aerospace goes beyond the year 2000. Pankel Aerospace acquired a company called Clark and Wheeler in the year 2000 and people that were with Clark and Wheeler are with us now under the name of Pankel Aerospace. They have been with us for 30, 40, 50 years working in the aerospace industry. So there's a lot of knowledge, there's a lot of history within the Pankel Aerospace name. We make components that matter, that keep families safe, that keep our Army and our Marines safe wherever they go. We make what's called flight critical components, meaning that if the component fails, there is no redundancy. The aircraft fails. So we take a lot of pride in what we make, in what we do, and who we do it for. Horst has a lot more knowledge when it comes to the details, so I'm going to hand off the mic to him, but I want to thank the City of Cerritos for taking us into consideration for this award. It's something that was unexpected, but very much, I'm very much thankful for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much and good evening. My name is Horst Riga. I'm the CEO of the company. I'm very pleased to be here. Thank you very much for having us. It's a great honor to be here and like Manny said, the parts that we're doing require a lot of skilled people here. The company is small. We have invested a lot of money over the last couple of years and we will continue to do so because we have the goal to double the size of the company in terms of sales and in terms of the employees. Manny has also mentioned that we're doing the so-called flight critical components. Everything which is non-redundant in a helicopter, in a jet engine, is coming from Pankel and that means we're, our parts are critical for flight safety and for the safety of the people, for the pilots, for the crew, and also for the passengers, especially in commercial aviation. That being said, we rely on a lot of people who have actually really great skill, experience, and a lot of knowledge on these processes we're working on. Like for instance, all of the Blackhawk H-60 Sikorsky fleet components are produced out of the Cerritos facility. So all Blackhawks worldwide are equipped with parts that are produced here. So that makes us proud, that should make us proud that such critical components are coming out of our small facility with great people. Again, thank you very much. We're very much honored and want to wish you all the best.
It, Horst and Manny, it does make me proud that Pankel Aerospace Systems is in Cerritos. So if I could please present you with this proclamation from the City of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council and if I could please call up my council colleagues so we could take a photo with Pankel Aerospace Systems, the Business Spotlight, and with Manny and Horst. Three photos, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you for going to call up our state representative. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can Maddy please come up from our California State Senator's office? State Senator Tony Strickland?
I'll make it short because what you guys do is very complicated and I'm sure I couldn't speak too much about it, but thank you so much for all you do and I'm sure you could have picked anywhere to have your business, but thank you for choosing Cerritos and Senate District 36. So congratulations.
Thank you. And then also we have from our Assemblywoman's Sharon Quirk Silva's office, Joe Pack.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to congratulate the Pankel Aerospace Systems, Inc. in honor of, for your selection as a Cerritos City's Business Spotlight.
Congratulations. Three photos, ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three. One, two, three, one, two, three. Five.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you to our Business Spotlight, Pankel Aerospace Systems. I'm very proud and honored for the next presentations, Eagle Scouts. The rank of Eagle Scout, which is awarded to only 2% of all members of the Boy Scouts of America, is the highest award that can be earned in Boy Scouting. This evening, the Cerrito City Council has the distinct honor and will recognize the Eagle Scouts of Troop 394, who have achieved this great honor through their hard work, perseverance, and dedication. Please come up, Yash Samaneni. Yash Samaneni's project consisted of constructing two portable backpack shelves for the students of Lille Elementary to place their backpacks, lunchboxes, and other items in a secure area while at recess or lunch. In addition to constructing the portable backpack shelves, Yash refurbished the Lille Elementary sign by repainting and applying a glossy finish to provide a more updated and modern look. The entire project took over 40 hours to complete with a team of 17 scouts in support of Lille Elementary parents showcasing his organizational and leadership skills and the commitment to helping the community. Thank you, Yash. I wanted you to know I'm a Lille Lion dad. My, my daughter and son went to Lille and my niece and nephew are there right now. So thank you for your project that benefited Lille Elementary families and students. If I can please give you the mic and if you could tell us about your journey to Eagle Scout.
Good evening to everybody. Thank you to Mayor Yokoyama, sorry, and the council members. Yes, as mentioned, my name is Yash Samaneni. I am an Eagle Scout from Troop 394. I have been a part of the troop for almost seven years now and finally last year, we accomplished, I accomplished my Eagle project and finished receiving my Eagle rank. Just a little bit about my journey. I started back in sixth grade and I was, literally, I did not know anything about scouting at all. I had no idea what I was getting into. I just knew I was going camping with my friends and I was getting to do a bunch of fun activities. But as I started going throughout the years, I started to realize that there's a lot more about scouting than just camping. You learn so many different skills that translate to real-life opportunities and careers and I could not be any more grateful for those skills that I've learned and the people I have learned those skills with. I would just like to thank my parents and my sister because of all the support that they've given me throughout the whole process and the leaders of our scout troop as well because without them I would not be here as the man I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, Yash. So for your high achievement of being and becoming an Eagle Scout, if I can please present you with the City of Cerritos Proclamation and please call up my council colleagues so we can take a photo with Eagle Scout Yash.
Call him, I like that. Take the photo. Take the photo and then you can join.
Oh.
You can join after your questions.
Five photos, ready, one, two, one. Five photos, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five. So Yash, would you please call up your family for the photos?
Oh, yes, right, right here.
Five photos again, ready, one, two, one, two, three, four, and five. Yash, Yash, stay up here. So can Maddy from State Senator Tony Strickland's office please come up to make a presentation from our State Senator?
Thank you. And I'll make this short because I know there's a lot of y'all and a lot of families, but my brother was an Eagle Scout. My family was huge into scouting, so I know what a big accomplishment this is. So congratulations and thank you for all the hard work you did for the community with your Eagle Scout project as well.
Three photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three.
This is from the Assemblywoman Sharon Quirk Silva's office. Congratulations. Make sure I get a copy of this picture, you know, because every Eagle Scout becomes somebody important later, so I can say, "I took a picture with this guy."
That's the plan. Thank you so much.
Three photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
And this one. Three photos, ready, one, two, one, two, and three. Sarvesh Thurmaali, if you could please come up. Sarvesh Thurmaali. His project consisted of the restoration of a military Humvee ambulance, which was used in active service at the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Alamos. Mr. Thurmaali led a team of volunteers in the preservation and restoration and restoration of key elements of the Humvee, which included cleaning and painting to honor its military history. This project took more than 20 hours to complete, demonstrating Sarvesh's dedication and commitment to helping others. Please join me in congratulating Eagle Scout Sarvesh Thurmaali. Sarvesh, congratulations. If you could please tell us about your journey. Sarvesh, congratulations. If you could please tell us about your journey to Eagle Scout?
Hello, everyone. Hello, Mayor and team. My name is Sarvesh Thurmaali, and as you guys know, I have reached Eagle. My scouting journey actually starts very similar to Yash's. We actually went to our first meeting together. I don't know if he remembers, but yes, that was something I'm clear memory of mine. I'm sorry I wasn't prepared with the speech, but that's exactly what scouting allowed me to do. Make a speech on the spot, be very open, and be able to public speak with all my ability. My Eagle journey was fun. It was educational, and most of all, it taught me how to make friends into brothers. That's the seven brothers I'm here with. Actually, six. One of them is out of town right now. Scouting has also given me the opportunity to give back to my country through my, give back to my city and give back to, you know, the general citizens of the city I'm in. My Eagle project was a big part of my scouting journey. It was, my Eagle project was something I chose with great passion towards. I have an interest in serving my country, and I thought this was a wonderful way to start that journey by restoring a military Humvee that was used in war. Scouting has also taught me how to be the citizen I am today, and I hope many others should also take part in scouting. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Eagle Scout Sarvesh, if I can please present you with the City of Cerritos proclamation from the City of Cerritos and the Cerritos City Council, and if my council colleagues could please join me up here for a photo with Sarvesh. Congratulations, Sarvesh. So, Sarvesh, can you please call up your family?
Can you guys come up here?
Okay, so Matty, can you please come up to give a presentation, a certificate of merit from our state Senator Tony Strickland?
Well, congratulations to you as well, and thank you for what you did at Los Alamo Base. That's in our Senate district as well, so you're obviously not only impacting your community, but those beyond. So, congratulations again.
Okay, so we're also gonna have a certificate from Assemblymember Sharon Cook-Silva's office, Joe Pack.
Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva, okay?
Mohit Banda, come up, please. Mohit Banda's project consisted of the beautification of the La Palma Inter-Community Hospital waiting area through updating the landscaping and painting. Mulch was added to the small garden area to assist with the fertility of the soil and increase moisture retention. And several new plants were added to create a more visually appealing garden area. In total, Mohit coordinated a team of 24 volunteers who contributed 90 hours to complete the restoration of the garden and addition of the benches. By creating a safe and pleasant space for visitors of the hospital, Mohit was able to showcase his hard work and dedication to helping improve the lives of others. Let's give a round of applause to Eagle Scout Mohit Banda. Mohit, can you please tell us about your journey to Eagle Scout?
All right. Thank you so much, Frank Yokoyama and the rest of the council for giving me the opportunity to speak. So, similar to Yash and Sarvesh, my journey was pretty similar. I didn't know anything much about scouting when I first entered. But one of the biggest issues that I had at the time was that I was not great at speaking with other people. Whenever my parents would take me to parties, a lot of the people would be adults who I wasn't confident with speaking around. And because of that, I would always either get into 15-second conversations where I would just give a brief greeting and then walk off to go to my parents. Scouting gave me the opportunity not just to interact with members of my troop, but also members of other troops in the Cerritos area or in the P.O. Pico District, which had other scout members. So, through campouts, I was able to interact with several different people, and I managed to get more confident and was able to hold more coherent conversations. Additionally, I also learned more through scouting and was able to learn important life skills that went beyond just being able to go on campouts and live on my own. It also helped me get more involved with people and learn more about, well, myself and just how I was able to interact with others. And it was really a transformative experience and was a really life-changing six years that I went through. And I am really grateful to all the troop leaders, my family, everyone who supported me throughout my scouting journey. And it really was something that changed my life for the better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mohit. Congratulations on becoming an Eagle Scout. If I can please present you with the City of Cerritos proclamation celebrating that you are Eagle Scout. And if I could please have my council colleagues come up and join me in a group photo with Eagle Scout Mohit Banda. Okay, so, if I could please call up from our state senator's office, State Senator Tony Strickland, Matty?
Well, congratulations to you as well. Thank you for all your hard work. Boy Scouts obviously teaches you more than just life skills out in the wilderness, but also in life, interacting with other people. So, I'm sure everyone here is very proud of how far you've come, and congratulations again.
Congratulations from the Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva. Congratulations from the Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva. I think we need to be in the middle, a little bit more. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mohit. Vishal Sivakumar, please come on up. Vishal Sivakumar. Vishal Sivakumar's project consisted of constructing a new wooden toy box for the Concordia Lutheran Church daycare. The church manager, Mr. Tom Almany, requested a new toy box to replace the worn toy box. Mr. Sivakumar led a team of 36 volunteers over 82 hours in the planning, constructing, and completing of the project, showcasing his determination and commitment to helping others. Thank you, Eagle Scout Vishal Sivakumar. Let's give him a round of applause. And if I could ask my council colleagues to join us in a photo, this is a City of Cerritos proclamation congratulating Vishal on becoming an Eagle Scout. So, if I can please call up Matty from State Senator Tony Strickland's office and Joe Pack from Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva's office to present their certificates to Vishal.
Congratulations from Senator Tony Strickland, and thank you for all the work you've done for the community.
Congratulations from the Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva's office.
Most importantly, I'd love to hear about your journey to Eagle Scout, Vishal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Vishal, and I've been scouting since I was in middle school. I was always a very shy, introverted person. I wasn't very talking that much out of my two or three friends at school. So, I thought scouting would be a great experience for me to get out of my comfort zone and try new things. When I first joined Scouts, I knew a couple of Scouts from there, from my school, and I was very intrigued to see what events they would be doing, such as camping and hiking. But I would never have learned all the valuable skills, such as leadership and responsibility, that would come along the way. I feel like as a scout, I've gained the confidence to go and do things on my own without having someone to hold my hand through the journey. And I thank everyone that's supported me through my journey of scouting, and I will make you guys proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Vishal Sivakumar on becoming an Eagle Scout. Alvin Kishore, please come on up. Alvin Kishore's project consisted of landscape restoration at Giving Children Hope in Buena Park. Mr. Kishore led a team of 20 volunteers to clear debris, regrade, and line three planters. In addition, Mr. Kishore planted succulents and mulch, repainted a 35-foot-long curb, and added drip irrigation. The project took 45 hours to complete and showcased Alvin's dedication to helping others. Let's congratulate Eagle Scout Alvin Kishore. Alvin, can you please tell us about your journey to Eagle Scout?
As Mayor Yokoyama said, my name is Alvin Kishore, and I wanted to thank all the council members for allowing my fellow Eagle Scouts and I to receive a proclamation. So, a few words about my scouting journey. I started around six years ago, as my fellow Scouts did. And I remember the beginning. A distinct memory of mine was the first campout. I was really anxious, and I wasn't really ready for it. I only knew like a few Scouts in the troop. But I remember coming out of that campout knowing that I wanted to continue scouting and be a part of the scouting journey. Because during my scouting journey, I learned a lot. I've been through many different responsibilities in the troop, like JSM, chaplain's aide, scout, or, sorry, quartermaster, and a lot of other responsibilities that I learned a lot from. And I think one of the most important things in my journey was watching my fellow Scouts grow, as well as myself. And I think it was a transformative experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Alvin. So, congratulations on becoming an Eagle Scout. If my council colleagues can please join me. This is a City of Cerritos proclamation celebrating that you became an Eagle Scout, Alvin Kishore, and my council colleagues will join me for a photo with you. Okay, so if Alvin's photo can come and join us for the group photo, please? We're gonna take a photo with Alvin's family? Okay, if I can call up from our state Senator Tony Strickland's office, Matty, and from our Assemblywoman Sharon Cook-Silva's office, Joe Pack.
Congratulations, and I know Giving Children Hope's huge in Buena Park, so I'm sure they appreciate all of your work with your Eagle project.
It is gonna be a little bit longer because this is the last one, right? So, well, right now, tonight, we are just focusing on the Eagle Scout's demonstration of his leadership abilities by planning an Eagle Service project. But in order to get here, they have to earn, he has to complete the ranks of Star and Life Scout and has fulfilled the requirement for at least 21 merit badges. So, 21 merit badges make you a little bit heavier, right? And also, 12 of which involve strategic training, character development, and fitness, and nine of which are in field of his own choice. And the Eagle Scout Award is provided only to those young men who have attained outstanding achievement in scouting and whose service to their troop and community has been exemplary, and his scouting achievements are an outstanding example of America in action. And his keen sense of maturity and developed And his keen sense of maturity and developed leadership ability have placed him in the esteem of his community and fellow Scouts. So congratulations, Mr. Kishore.
Alvin. Okay, so if I can please call up Yash Samaneni. Sorry about that. Yash Samaneni Sarvesh Mohit Vishal. We're gonna take a group photo of the Eagle Scouts with the Cerritos City Council. Come on up, if my council colleagues can join us. If you could, yeah, bring up your City of Cerritos proclamation, please. Your City of Cerritos proclamation. Make sure you get good ones, Phil.
One, two, one, one, two, two, one, two, three.
This is for the newspaper. Congratulations. You wanna be on this? Yeah, that's why we're recognizing them. Good to see you. Where's the husband? Okay, let's take a group photo. Make sure everybody can be seen. Spread out a little if you have to, because you'll get everybody, right? Tell people if they need to move. We recognize Cerritos residents. Did I miss the Cerritos residents?
He's not here today.
I would
Congratulations. First of all, thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Okay, so lastly, from Troop 394, we have Hassan.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak because I was so impressed with the Mayor Yokohama and the city council members. Always, I'm a very proud resident of the City of Cerritos. And as you can see, that we have a great pride in our Eagle Scouts. You know, I always used to envy their hairstyle, but today, I envy their speaking skills. So, and I'm really happy that the city appreciates these things. And this has been a wonderful day for all of us. And for all the parents and my better partner, Mrs. Latava Hassan. She is the driving force behind the troop. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Hassan. You beat me to it when you were gonna give me back the mic. I was going to thank you, the friend of the Cerritos City Council, Latava Hassan, for joining us today with her involvement with Troop 394. But I am, I'm always excited as a council member and for this year, the mayor of Cerritos, to always recognize our youth who are achieving great things here in our City of Cerritos. Recognizing our Cerritos youth and you five young men, congratulations on achieving this outstanding life achievement of becoming Eagle Scout. Congratulations. And the city council has received your correspondence. Thank you, we will distribute it. Okay, so that was a great, a great collection of worthy presentations during our during our presentation's agenda item. Plus, we got a great informational report from the ABC School District. Let's take a three-minute break. Three-minute break. Five C. Does the city council have any appointments to make this evening? Councilmember say? Five C Advisory Board Appointments?
No, sir.
Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Johnson? Okay, so then we'll move on to Item 5D. Mayor's Annual Appointments. I ask for council consensus to defer this item to the next city council meeting.
I concur.
We have consensus. Item 6, Public Comments. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or conduct that disrupts the conduct of the city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. The following comments pertain to all public comments, all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda Item 6, Public Comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. Prior to tonight's meeting, the city council received full text, unredacted copies of the two written comments submitted by the deadline for Item 6. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the Office of the City Clerk during regular business hours. I will now open for Item 6, Public Comments. Jose Badio. You're not required to use it, sir.
Okay, good, good, good. My purpose of here is that it's, and all of you guys have kids in Cerritos. I would imagine. I have two boys and live in here already thirty-plus years. And I enjoyed it first time coming out to Cerritos because of their trees.
Please talk into the mic.
Okay, because of the trees.
Drew, can you raise it? He's a tall gentleman.
I'm only six-one, but shrinking. So I came out here originally because I enjoy Cerritos, the schools, trees, environment, and everything. Thirty years have passed, I got two boys. They come here and I sit down one time with them and they said, Dad, we love Cerritos because of the trees. Their friends come by, we love Cerritos because of their trees. All of a sudden, in my neighborhood, and I live off of Markord and Carmenita in that complex right by the fire station, you guys are knocking down all the pine trees. I know that you have issues with them, but please. I know that you have issues with them, but please, I mean, these trees do bring some beauty to the city, my area especially. It's, I mean, I love the place because of them. Lately, there's less birds, there are, so right now, there's, everything is just dwindling. Instead of killing the trees, let's embrace them a little bit and take care of them. You know, I know there is probably destroying some of the sidewalks or something like that, but that could be repaired. A tree cannot be replaced, especially to something that size and that long and that beautiful. So if you guys can at least take into consideration, embrace these trees, enjoy them, because not only are they present now, but for our next generation. You know, you guys talk about having kids here. Well, let's, let's give them the trees also. Let's keep those things here so that when the families, these new families come, they can enjoy these things. Knocking them down and planting trees that are not taken care of, that die within a couple of years because they're not being maintained properly is not gonna really change what we're seeing right now. And keeping these trees in place with the environment, the animals, and the birds, it'll be beautiful. Let's maintain what we have, let's not, let's not create Arizona. Okay, so embrace the big trees, please. I know you guys have an agenda to knock them down, but let's, let's look at that again. Let's look at how we can change that and maintain our beautiful image in the city and for the future. That's all, thanks.
Jose, what, what streets are you talking about that brought you here?
I live in, uh, Oclaro and, um, Elaine, and that's by the fire station.
What are the cross streets, please?
Uh, Mar Cord, Artesia, and Carmenita. So you know where there's, I think it's Fire Station Number 34.
Are you talking about, uh, pine trees on the residential streets and the parkways or on the arterial streets?
They're on, they're on the front city side. You know that, uh, that, that area that pertains to city? There are the pine trees inside that area. They're not on the property, or let's say on my house. I mean, I have a peanut tree there on my side, but the people with the pine trees is on the city core, uh, city section. Last, uh, two weeks ago, you guys knocked a tree, uh, or knocking a tree down. I went out to talk to these, uh, people that are knocking them down, saying, why are you guys doing this? They all looked at me saying, I don't know, this is a perfectly healthy tree.
So you're talking about on the residential street in the parkway?
Yes.
In front of the house?
Yes.
Uh, next to the curb?
Yes. Later to find out that the only reason that tree was knocked down because someone called and said, I don't like that tree. That's not right, this is part of Cerritos. That's Cerritos, I guess we all pay for that portion of it. You know, let, let's not just knock it down for someone saying, uh, I don't like this tree. There was two other trees knocked down because the houses, uh, they used to be one-story home, but now they're two-story homes, they've just expanded their homes. And one of the condition was to knock one of the pine, uh, knock the pine trees down. Right, there we go again, knocking pine trees only because someone said, I don't like that tree. And it's on the city side on top of that. So I'm just trying to save these guys because they do bring a look to us, and I enjoy them. The next generation could enjoy them, we all can enjoy them and, and keep these trees with us instead of knocking them down.
Thank you, Mr. Badio. Badio?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Badio. Alvin, can you make sure you, uh, get contact information for Mr. Badio so that we can, uh, inform him and update him regarding, uh, the trees in his area of Cerritos? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there was, I think, already two of them knocked down earlier in the week.
Thank you for coming in and sharing with us.
Alright, thank you.
We will communicate, we will communicate with you.
Okay.
Kirat Chauhan.
Good evening, Mayor and the Council. I want to thank the Council for encouraging and allowing the City of Cerritos committee members to attend the AAPI Conference. I personally learned a lot from the conference. You know, and I also made a couple of new friends that I wouldn't have had I not attended the conference. I went to the conference that piqued my interest. Conferences are places where information is shared and the meaning you extract is up to you. I learned about how shaping congressional caucuses makes a difference. Follow the money, intersection between finance and government. And the most interesting law, using data to improve economic mobility in your community. To that end, on our city website, we are very proud to state our median home price is $1 million. We have the occupation of our residents. We even state the educational level, it's right there, you can actually search. Fifty-five percent or more of our residents have a bachelor's or a master's. Our median income is $142,000 for a couple. Families, $129,000, household, $124,000. In fact, 65% of our residents earn more than $100,000. But it masks a little problem. 7% of our residents earn below $25,000. So to what extent will our policies reflect the disparity that we have in the community? Thank you.
Thank you, Kirat. Are the, are there any other speakers for Item 6 Public Comments? Any other speakers? Okay, the City Council received written comments by the deadline for Item 6. Stephen Shea submitted a written comment saying that several streetlights in the Cerritos Town Center area, Bloomfield Avenue, 183rd Street, Shoemaker Avenue, Town Center Drive, and Park Plaza Drive are not working at night, causing dark areas and poor visibility. City Manager, can we please look at those streetlights in that area that Stephen Shea identified in his public comment, please?
Yes, thank you, those will be assessed.
Thank you. And then in another public comment from Stephen Shea, he reported that there are cars doing donuts at the intersection of Artesia Boulevard and Studebaker Road, damaging our newly painted crosswalks. Could we please look into that? And Captain Drew Strong, have you heard anything about these cars doing donuts at the intersection of Artesia Boulevard and Studebaker Road, damaging our crosswalks?
Yes, sir, uh, we are aware that cars are going over there and racing once in a while and doing some donuts. In fact, um, just a short period of time ago, one of our deputies observed one of these vehicles and ended up going in a vehicle pursuit of that car down Studebaker North on the, uh, the 605 freeway ending at the 91 freeway. So we are aware of that issue and we are addressing it.
Okay, thank you for addressing that and keeping our residents safe. Captain Drew Strong. Okay, seeing no, no other speakers, I will close the public comment period. Item 7 Consent Calendar. Do I have any questions or comments from the Council? Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 7A for separate consideration.
Okay, pull 7A. Does anybody, any of my council colleagues want to pull anything else off the consent calendar? Okay, so we have pulled 7A off the consent calendar. Do I have a motion? I'll move to approve the consent calendar except for Item 7A. Okay, it was moved by me, seconded by, um, Councilmember Palito, let's vote.
The electronic voting is now active.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Hong?
Yes.
Councilmember Palito?
Aye.
Councilmember Say?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Abstain.
This is on the consent calendar except for Item 7A.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And Mayor Yokuyama?
Yes.
The motion passed on a vote of five to zero.
Okay, Item 7A, you asked to pull this from the consent calendar, Mayor Protem.
Yes, I, I asked to pull it because I was not at the, uh, last meeting. However, I do have a question for our City Attorney. Um, for this item or any other item on the agenda or future agendas, can you please explain the difference between a no vote and a vote of abstention?
Sure, a no vote is exactly that, to vote, um, against an item. To abstain is, in essence, not voting on an item. Uh, it means you are refraining to exercise your right to vote on that matter. Uh, it's neither a yes or a no, but for purposes of determining, you know, the majority, it would not be included, uh, except in very rare circumstances. Sometimes it is treated as a no vote, but in a case such as this, an abstention is a consideration of a non-vote.
Okay, very good. So it, in essence, what you're saying abstention means you're not taking a position of yes or no.
Correct.
You're just not exercising your, 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 well, for us, our ability to, uh, vote.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you. So yes, um, make a, um, motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve Item 7A.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by myself and seconded by Councilmember Hong to approve Item 7A.
So then City Attorney, would be appropriate for me to abstain then from this vote?
Because you were not present at this meeting, it would be appropriate.
Thank you.
I think, uh...
The motion passed on a vote of four to zero with one abstention.
Item 8A, Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, the first public hearing, Item 8A, is a legal compliance, uh, in light of state law. Uh, there's a need to update the city's standards, uh, as it relates to our water systems. Um, the presentation this evening will be given by Director of Public Works Alvin Papa, and following his presentation, he now would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. This evening, staff is requesting the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 13.2 Cross Connection Control Program of the Cerritos Municipal Code and adoption of a resolution to formally adopt the State Water Resources Control Board's Cross Connection Control Policy Handbook, otherwise known as the CCCPH. The CCCPH replaces outdated California Code of Regulations Title 17 requirements and provides more comprehensive and standardized approaches to safeguarding public water systems from contamination caused by backflow incidents. Adopting the CCCPH ensures our program remains compliant with current state regulations and supports improved testing, reporting, and public education measures. The proposed ordinance also aligns the city's municipal code with these standards, authorizing enforcement tools like water service shut-off for non-compliance. Uh, that concludes my verbal presentation. Assistant Director Chris Cubert, Water Superintendent Jose Arroyo, Water Quality Specialist Frank Valenzuela, and myself are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the report, Alvin Papa, Chris Cubert, Jose Arroyo, Frank Valenzuela, and Sophia Taylor. Do we have any questions from the Council? Do we have any questions, Councilmember Say?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just clarification about this vials, back, backflow vials. And my question is, um, do you have any way to stop the mix of drinkable versus, uh, recycle water, clean water?
Yes, so our, currently our water system is two separate, um, systems. We have a separate system for potable water, that's drinking water, and a separate system for recycled water. So they, they are separate and not connected. Um, part of this cross connection control plan is to identify any potential contamin, contamination. And if they see that, that's where, um, the, their regulation's in place to do inspections, inspect any devices, and prevent any potential contamination.
Because they're parallel, so they're crossed. Does any make a hole there, then you have clean water and the contempt, the non-clean, non-drinkable water mixed together? Would any possible?
So as part of the, um, cross connection control plan, there are devices that prevent the contamination. Um, so these are called backflow devices, and that makes sure that, uh, there is no potential way for contamination to enter the water system. Those devices must be inspected annually. And then Frank Valenzuela, uh, who will be in charge of our cross connection control program, will be responsible for inspecting the devices, um, working with our property owners to make sure that they're inspected annually, and then also providing reports to the state.
You did mention we have backflow specialists, I'm sorry, who is the one appointed for the position? The backflow specialist?
Oh, uh, currently that is Frank Valenzuela.
Frank Valenzuela, okay, um, um, during this ordinance, change it, would that be of, change the prices of our resident and business people?
Uh, for the, for this specific administrative change, the, um, the, the cost or the budget, uh, in next year's operational budget is sufficient, um, to be able to meet, um, all the policy changes. There is a little bit of additional training in staff, um, but we've designated existing staff to serve as the role of the administrator, and so there's just some additional training that they need to do.
The training costs is under the, is still including our budget, right?
Yes, it's within our existing operation budget. Uh, I'm not sure, I will have to defer to, uh, Mr. Valenzuela. Frank, do you know? Okay, thank you, Frank. Uh, so it's about $1,600 per class, and it's a class that's taken at USC.
And that's the cover, like you said?
Yes, within our existing operations budget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito, do you have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Papa and staff for the presentation, the report. On page two, talks about fiscal impact, and it says, uh, this may require moderate administrative costs, including staff training, which you just addressed, $1,600 per session. Uh, but could you give us a, a combined amount that this is gonna impact our, uh, current 2025, 2026 budget?
Yes, we currently don't have those numbers now, but that is something I'd be glad to put together and circle back with City Council via administrative memo, um, with the amounts to the impact, um, to the existing budget, if any.
One thing I would clarify, though, there would not be a need for a budget amendment that we have with, within the approved funds in the budget, we have sufficient to cover this.
Got that, I, I understand that's already built in. I'm just trying to assess, uh, how much, uh, we have to, uh, pay for, for something that the state is requiring us to do.
Yes, we can, we can get those numbers, sir.
That's, that's my interest. And, um, follow-up question is, uh, is this an ongoing cost? How often are we gonna have to do this? Or this one time?
Uh, so once the, the policy is implemented, there are changes in the way that we do business. There's additional reporting requirements, additional inspection requirements. So there will be a little bit more staff time in implementing these changes. Um, if it is the will of the Council, we can do an analysis and make an estimate as to how much it used to cost us to implement the program versus what we estimate it will cost us in the future.
Great, all good, uh, questions to answer, and perhaps that could all be included in the memo. Okay, thank you, Mr. Papa, thank you, Mr. Lopez, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito, Councilmember Palito, Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions? Thank you, Councilmember Polito. Councilmember Polito, Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions? I will now open the public hearing and public comments on this item. Are there any speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and public hearing. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say? Councilmember Hong, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Polito? Mayor Protem Johnson?
No, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Did you get that, city clerk?
I first heard a second by Mayor Protem Johnson.
So then you heard a second from Mayor Protem Johnson. The motion was to approve the staff recommendation, correct?
I believe the electronic voting is active. And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
The next item is 8B. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Item 8B is a development proposal, a building expansion that comes to you at the recommendation of the Planning Commission. The presentation this evening will be given by current planning manager Amanda Acuna, and following her presentation, she and Ms. Aguilera and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. The item before you is a request by property owner LH Investments LLC for their approval of precise Plan 1972-29A 2025 Amendment to construct a 9,994 square foot addition to an existing warehouse building located at 1411 183rd Street. Before you is an aerial view of the subject property. The property was originally developed in 1972 and is generally located west of Valley View Avenue, north of 183rd Street, and east of Coyote Creek. Currently, the property contains a 40,000 square foot warehouse building with one building entrance at the building's office area. The slide before you includes photos of the existing industrial building. The photo on the left, we have a view of looking northeast at the existing parking area and west of the building. The photo on the right, we have a view of looking east along 183rd Street. Here, we have a view of the east side of the subject property, which currently contains a large landscape lawn area. This area is the site where the warehouse addition is being proposed. As mentioned, the applicant proposes to construct a 9,994 square foot addition consisting of warehouse and office space to the east side of the existing building, where the current landscape lawn exists. The proposal also includes various exterior facade improvements and upgrades to the existing parking area, as described in the agenda report for this item. Before you is a proposed site plan by the applicant, with the addition area shown here in red. And directly in front, the proposal for a new parking area and driveway shown here in blue. These are the proposed building elevations by the applicant. The existing building features a combination of stucco and exposed arrogant tilt-up walls, which will remain. The proposed exterior improvements will refresh the building with white-colored stucco and gray-colored stucco trims detailed with horizontal and vertical scorelines. The addition will also match the existing building, including the use of exposed arrogant panels. In addition, the building entrance will feature modern black aluminum awnings. As mentioned, the proposed project was considered by the Planning Commission on July 2 of this year. After discussion and finding that the project is categorically exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, the commission voted 5-0, recommending that the city council approve the proposed project. As such, at this time, it is recommended that the city council conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the proposed project. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff would be happy to answer any questions that the council may have, as well the applicant's representative and the applicant's designer are also available tonight to answer any questions by the council. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Amanda Acuna. Do we have any questions from the council? Councilmember Say?
What kind of project this one, what kind of business they are, and do they pay the cell tax too? Because I know they've been there quite a while.
Yes, the business currently located at the, within the warehouse building is a wholesale company that sells sunglasses and other glass items. Currently, again, as a wholesale business.
Okay, thank you. I may always welcome business in our city. That's what we need right now. Thank you, though. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Hong?
I just want to make some comments. I was at that meeting during the last Planning Commissioner meeting, and I'm pleased to tell everybody, we have a very good planning commission this time. They all went through all the details, and after the presentation, they have the questions. And I also met the owner from this building. I'm so happy for them that they have a wonderful business in Cerritos, especially during this difficult time, and they're expanding their business. So we're very welcome, and we're, I think they're more like e-commerce type of a business. That's why this is very good for our city, and we welcome most of this kind of businesses come to our Cerritos, and we are so pleased to see they're expanding and they're growing. And as a councilman, I'm very happy to see that, and I wish all the businesses doing well in Cerritos as well. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilmember Hong?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Polito, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson? I will now open the public hearing and public comments on this item. Are there any speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period and public hearing. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Say?
No.
Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Polito?
No, sir.
Mayor Protem Johnson? Do we have a motion?
Yes, I have the mo-
Councilmember Hong, you have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve this plans amendment.
Second.
Did you get that motion, city clerk and city attorney?
I have a motion made by Councilmember Hong and seconded by Mayor Protem Johnson to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, it's actually the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Thank you.
So you have the person who made the motion and the second?
Yes. And I believe the electronic voting is active.
Okay, I see it. Thank you.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. The next item is item 9A, Water Rate Adjustment Options. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. New and old business item 9A follows up on prior city council direction to take the next steps needed to effectuate potential water rate adjustments. The presentation this evening will be given by Director of Public Works Alvin Papa, and following his presentation, he and members of the team and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Lopez. Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Mayor, and members of city council. Tonight's presentation covers the draft water rate study. I'll review funding needs, proposed rate structure changes, and rate options, including potential customer impacts. The city's water system consists of 172 miles of pipeline, three water wells, or four water wells, I'm sorry, three reservoirs, and over 15,300 service connections. Most of the city, most of the system is 50 to 60 years old. It's aging, and it's nearing the end of its useful life. Our water revenues fund operations, system repairs, capital upgrades, and the cost of water. That is for both groundwater pumping and purchasing imported water supply. The city currently has some of the lowest water rates in the region. However, rates have not covered the full cost to operate and maintain the system. The water fund has run deficits for years and relied on general fund support. In October 2023, the city council forgave 24.3 million in unpaid loans to the water and sewer funds. Of that amount, $10.8 million was to the water fund. Since then, the general fund has provided an additional $9 million more in non-reimbursable support to the water fund. Staff developed two rate scenarios that fit our needs. Scenario one funds all necessary capital projects and ends general fund support. This is what we should be doing to maintain long-term system reliability. Scenario two funds only critical projects, and these projects were adopted as part of our current CIP. And this scenario requires 9.5 million in general fund support over four years, ultimately sunsetting general fund support in year five. It delays full system upgrades. This scenario is considered the absolute minimum of what we need to do. If we do anything less than this, then we could potentially compromise our water supply.
Scenario two?
Scenario two, yes, sir. Our goal is to provide safe, reliable water at reasonable rates while also maintaining long-term fiscal stability. Scenarios 1 and 2A include the necessary increases in year one to allow for capped 5% annual increases thereafter. Staff recognizes that sometimes, or in some scenarios, the initial increase in year one may be greater for, greater than what some residents can reasonably accommodate. So Scenario 2B was created to soften the initial cost impact to our customers. It spreads the rate increases more smoothly over time, while still meeting the city's critical infrastructure and financial needs. One thing to note is that these percentages shown above, they reflect the revenue adjustments, not direct customer bill increases. Customer bills will vary based on their meter size and the amount of their water use. A typical single-family water bill assumes 2,000 cubic feet, that is CCF, every two months for a standard water meter. The chart that you see here shows sample bills under each scenario. Scenario 1 and 2A include larger increases in year one, and Scenario 2B offers a smaller, gentler increase in the beginning. Please keep in mind, like I mentioned in the previous slide, rates do not directly match the revenue adjustment percentages that were shown previously. This slide shows the rate increases under each scenario. The red line fully funds all projects, ensures system reliability, and ends general fund support quickly. So that red line is Scenario 1. It has the highest initial increase, followed by steady 5% annual increases. The green line, Scenario 2A, funds only the critical projects. It starts with a lower initial increase but relies on general fund support for at least four more years, and it also assumes 5% increases after year one. And the gray line, Scenario 2B, has the exact same scope as 2A, but starts with the lowest initial increase and phases rates in more gradually, as you can see in the chart. And this diagram here shows how we compare regionally. Cerritos' current rate, shown by the red asterisk on the bottom left, is amongst the lowest in the region. If we go with Scenario 1, this would raise rates the most, but would fully fund all our needed project and ends general fund support as soon as possible. Scenario 2A and 2B fund only our critical needs, but would keep Cerritos' rates comparable to nearby cities. Commercial customers are a smaller share of our system. Their rate changes reflect actual use and system demand, which differs from residential patterns. This chart you see here shows how a typical business using 12500 cubic feet every two months would be affected under each scenario. This graph shows the five-year rate increases for a typical commercial customer. Similar to the residential slide, the red line is Scenario 1. The green line is Scenario 2A, and the gray line is Scenario 2B. And as with the residential, Cerritos' commercial rates are also amongst the lowest in the region, again shown by the red asterisk. Scenario 1 results in the highest rates, and Scenarios 2A and 2B keep commercial rates in line with nearby cities. This concludes the presentation. The next steps include future presentations on potential water, or on reclaimed water and sewer rates in August. Final rate study reports for water, reclaimed water, and sewer will be presented to the city council in October. And then, following the public hearing in January, new water rates could potentially take effect as early as February 1, 2026. Staff recommends the city council discuss the rate options and provide direction on a preferred scenario and rate structure. Charles Diamond, our rate consultant, Chris Cubert, and myself are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report, Alvin Papa. Thank you, Drew Schneider, Chris Cubert, Peter Kemp, and Sergio Huizar, working together to put together this very important agenda report that directly arises out of our budget that we approved last month as a city council unanimously, giving you direction on how to inform the city council regarding the water rate adjustments that were planned for in our unanimously approved budget. The gentleman from the consultant, what's the name, your name, sir, and the name of your consulting company? Again, I know it's in the agenda report, but can you say it?
Charles Diamond, Water Resources Economics.
Charles what?
Charles Diamond for Water Resources Economics.
Charles Diamond, thank you for joining us from Water Resources. What's the last word?
Economics.
Water Resources Economics, Charles Diamond. Thank you for joining us. I will now look to the city council for questions. Councilmember Say, do you have any questions?
Sir, I do have a couple of questions here. I did ask a deputy manager, Mr. Ryan, you know, because I watched the video on the May 2023 and the October, I think, 26, 23, the video, and compared what we have today. I got a little confused and not very happy about the rate we're going. Yes, I agree with the increased water, because compared to local city, we are the lowest one. Unfortunately, in the past, we not let the resident made aware of what we subsidized for them, and they didn't even know what we done for them. Now, all of a sudden, you increase, like a time three, I'm looking the- I'm looking at the A and in year one and two A. You know, it just totally, to me, is, is a humongous jump. But the jump actually is not compared to other cities, still kind of a little low to me, because I went back and called some residents, how much they pay other city, not our city. Our city is still like a hundred dollars, around that, even my own bill. But the concern is, I have right now is, number one, the question is, do we have some subsidy for the low-income family people based on pay scale? I know the Southern Edison had that program for that, based on the income. Then, we have the skill for that, how much they can pay, especially for senior citizen. Do we have that? Are we planning to do in the future?
We currently don't have a program in place for low-income households. If the City Council is interested, that is something that we can explore in connection with water rate adjustments.
The videotape go back, I think even our current mayor had mentioned about two thousand years, how miserable the rate is going on there. You know, he has a great point. At that time, I don't think many people listened to him. And even, and then back to 2013, and then 2023, May and October, there is a problem that invaded in there, and no one actually take action. All they just say loan off the twenty-four million. I'm not very happy, I'm not really seriously, like, now you telling me, drop the ball on my toes, say, hey, tell them to raise up three percent. They're gonna come, I mean, I have a right eye injury right now. They're gonna punch my left eyes, I can't even see anything anymore. I am concerned the rate. You know, when you present the tier, A and B, the senior thing, I like the way you see the wave, you know, but I still want the staff come back, give me expenditure of each item that you pretend to, how do you make this to, that this, how much you gonna raise? Like, you have employee, you have equipment, all the things that you need to have. And this kind of, to me, is transparency now. You're talking about August twenty-eight. Okay, first, we're talking about the water bill. Now, August twenty-eight presentation, you're gonna talk about reclaim issue there. There's another raised discussion. Yes, we are subsidizing them. I understand, so low. Even I talked to some, I do some study, I talked to the neighbor, and I asked him about some Chinese or other culture. I asked him about it, they realize eight dollar, how could you make it eight dollar? Why bother even charging eight dollar? The paperwork, the staff work, there's a lot of things going on there. But the issue, how we gonna convince them to allow, to then understand that? The jump, how we compromise thing around that? This is a way, I mean, yeah, in order to catch that, I understand that what you say. But you have CBI coming to talk about, then you might have something else that we all talking about in the future. Other city had increased their sales tax already there. But what's gonna happen to our city? You know, increase here, increase there, increase there. At the end, who's gonna control? Are you gonna drop the water rate? Are you gonna drop the CBI, since we have, we made a quarter, quarter, made our budget? So what's gonna happen there? Who's monitor that? Unfortunately, the city Ceritos, in the past, it was like two-year term, then you can, one term, you can come back. But then, they voted out, they voted out that, and it's so sad to me. It's not, I support no term. But I see the problem that we have is a handoff. When I watched the video, twenty twenty-three, October twenty-six, I heard the council member had discussed about that. And in May thirty, May, I forgot the date, May on 2023, they come back in October, but there was nothing really done there. I mean, you waive all the loan, you write about the loan, that's what they want to. But what else they take action? Ask you guys to study, and then two years later, come back and, hey, we're gonna increase in time three. How I'm gonna talk to my, how I'm gonna talk to the resident? That's gonna be hard for me today. So, I would like to, you know, I remember on 2023, when the council member say, I'd like to table out to have more detail. That's my question and my comment, Mayor.
I can respond to that, so thank you for the comment, Councilmember Say. So as part of this entire process, what we're doing here is presenting to you various rate options based on council's directions tonight. You will get a full staff report with regards to how the Roto Rate Study was developed. They've identified all our expenditures over the past years, and based on the money amount that we spent on staff time, on equipment, on resources, on building projects, projects that we have planned. Based on those actual expenditures, they've determined the rates that, the amount that the rates need to be set. In addition to putting together the cost for these rates, it's not just for operating and maintaining our system, it's also to fill our reserves, so we have a reserve policy. So the way that the rates are going to be set is that at the end of this five-year cycle, that we meet our minimum target reserve levels. And so, the way that the revenues have been developed is in order to ensure that we have long-term fiscal stability. In that report, you will see every number, how much we spent, every single actual, you'll also see our inflationary number assumptions. So over the past years, there have been assumptions for the amount of labor inflation, the amount of inflation for equipment, and then also the amount of, that we get charged from the Water Replenishment District to pump water out of the ground, and the state water project. So Metropolitan Water District also charges us to import water, and they raise their rates every year. So all those assumptions and everything, the transparency will be there as part of the final report that we present in October. Furthermore, as part of this process, there is public outreach where we will share some of this information with the public. It's a little bit premature to share that now, because staff will be reaching out to council with regards to what that public outreach will look like. That may be a community meeting at the senior center. It could be social media outreach or something we show on our website. That has not been developed yet, and that will be developed in conjunction with the presentation that we share with you in October.
Sorry, Mayor, so on October month, you were presented to all the expenditures, am I right? And after the board, the city approved it, then you're gonna send to the final rate study to the neighborhood, right? Meanwhile, you do public hearing, you do service to allow the neighborhood to understand what this is about, the water race, am I right?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct. So at the October twenty-third City Council meeting, City Council will be privy to all three rate study reports. You'll be able to review the reports, you'll be able to ask staff questions. And then, based upon approval of that rate study report, we will develop a Prop 218 notice that will go out to residents. And we have a sixty-day, it's a minimum forty-five-day notice period, but we're doing a sixty-day notice period to allow residents to review the rates, to ask questions before the public hearing is held.
I also want to acknowledge Mayor and our manager. Thank you so much, answered my question so fast. I was frustrated, and I want to thank you, Mayor. You really, you give me a detail, and I do watch the video the last time when you presented on 2023, it was really great. And the vision is being seen, but unfortunately, it wasn't being taken over. And that's how I was so upset about this whole thing, the water bills. You know, not being recognized, not being appreciated by the resident. Again, when you go raise here, I'm here, say, yeah, vote for yes. And then, as a voter citizen thinks, I feel I owe them a apology. I owe them explanation on it. Again, thank you, and I really appreciate, City Ceritos, we always do so much for the resident. Unfortunately, we, publicly wise, we're not doing really good. I remember very good communication with outside, which, I think, Mayor Porte, you had mentioned in the ABC School, but remember, we need the public relation. We have that, but we really need to focus on that too, not just let the people know what we're doing, let the people appreciate what they have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
Yes, I would like to ask a question. When, maybe the city manager or the staff can answer me. When was the last time we raised the water rate? And what was the situation at that time? What is five percent, or what, you know, and where we at right now? Please.
Yes, there was a similar process that was undertaken back in 2014. That's when there was a Prop 218-type process done. And at that time, the City Council set forth a seven-year plan for rate increases. The rate increases were much more modest than what we're proposing here. We do have infrastructure that has aged. There's a lot of needs that have been identified by our technical team. So this is, this increase is needed to address not only operational needs, but infrastructure needs, and as Mr. Papa alluded to, to build that reserve in accordance with our policy to be able to appropriately build for the future.
Okay, so is it possible you can give more detailed information? When you mentioned about 2014, and what is the actual result? Okay, what is the, like, what the report you did right now is wonderful. Is it possible you can tell how many years was the increase? And like, every year is five percent or three percent? If you don't have it right now, I appreciate if you can give it to me later on, it's fine. I just want to have that as, you know, have some knowledge, and also that the residence knows what was happening before and why are we getting to this stage, you know? And I think it's important for residents to understand that. And also, I would like say, to increase, to include a discount program for the low-income residents are very important, because we do have a lot of seniors, and they live on a very limited income. So that's my comment. Thank you.
I believe Mr. Papa has some information he can share now, and possibly Mr. Kemp as well. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Hong. On November thirteen, 2014, you know, during the public hearing, in that agenda report, they do have the rates that were, the Prop 218 notice that was posted at that time. And it does show the rates over the course of seven years. My understanding is that it was approximately ten percent annually. But with that, I will refer to Mr. Peter Kemp, our finance manager, if he has any additional background information.
Thank you, Mr. Papa and Mr. Lopez, and thank you, Councilmember, for the question. Mr. Papa is correct, it was a ten percent increase each year for seven years. That addressed some of the operational needs of the water utility, but it, you know, kind of failed to address some of the capital needs, which is why some of the numbers that we're seeing here tonight are a little bit more substantial. It did ultimately, throughout that seven-year period, it got us to a point right at the very end where the Water Fund was in the black for a year or two. But again, due to some of the infrastructure needs and the sunsetting of that increase, we're kind of back to where we were at that point. So the reason these numbers are a little bit more drastic is because we want to address those infrastructure needs as well.
Thank you for the explanation. I think this is what I was talking about. This is very important, the transparency, and let the resident know, because sometimes, I think I ask question is because I'm coming out from the resident's side, you know, and it's very important for us to provide them more detailed information. And I think people would appreciate that, because they want to know why, and this is very important. We're here, we know why, but a lot of time, the residents, they don't have that kind of background, or the understanding, or the knowledge. So I really appreciate all your report and your efforts. Thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Polito?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Papa, and staff, Drew Schneider, Chris Cubert, Peter Kemp, and Sergio Huizar for the report and the presentation. This last change, where Peter gave a little more detail, that refreshes my memory, because I was on the council at the time, 2014. I recall that action, that action that we needed to take, and that sustained us over a seven-year period. And it sounds like in 2021, at the conclusion of those seven years of consistent increases, that something stopped. Can you elaborate what happened on the council in 2021? Why they dropped the ball on continuing to fund our needs with water? Or Mr. Lopez, if you could? Because I was no longer on the council when that happened.
Yeah, there had been discussions, but ultimately, as Councilmember Say referenced, in October 2023, there was final action taken by the council to essentially forgive that prior loan to the Water and Sewer Fund. But there had been prior conversations by the council of taking the steps needed to come back with new water rate increases. One item that was done also concurrently was the development of a water master plan and a sewer master plan. Those are long-term projects where they do careful review of all of the infrastructure. They put cameras in the pipes and look at everything to make a full assessment as to what's needed, what the infrastructure demands are. So that process has resulted in where we are now. So it's been a long-term process to assess the needs and then come back with the actual recommendation.
Okay, so over the past four years, 2021 to current 2025, there were no subsequent increases after the seven years of ten percent each year. Is that correct?
That's correct, we have a gap in increases. It's typical, and we've seen in other cities where, and for example, what's outlined in front of you is a five-year plan. I believe that's the limit that we now have under Prop 218. But it is common in other cities to have a five-year outlook laid out, and as we near the end of that five-year term, we would begin the process of getting ready for a new five-year term, looking at what the needs are, what potential increases might be needed, so that can come before the council. That wasn't done in the past.
Okay, so over the most recent four years, where there was no action, but discussions and plans, costs went up, but we didn't increase the rates accordingly. And so now, we're here where we have to catch up. So the dereliction of the last council, once again, is put on this agenda for this council to have to make the hard decision. Is there anything that anyone can add to that? Or is that, is my assessment correct? Mr. Lopez, you mentioned earlier in response to Mrs. Say's inquiry about what programs we have in place to address the need of those who are on a fixed income, particularly our seniors, who had to sustain seven years of increases as they got older and further along in their golden years. And then, a period of four years of inaction that now they may be facing a big increase. In the four years where they didn't take action, was there any discussion about how, if they were gonna kick the can down the road, what they might do to mitigate the adverse impacts on those folks on a fixed income? And I'm not just talking about seniors, I mean, a lot of folks are trying to make ends meet. The issue today for every governmental agency is affordability.
So to answer the question about prior actions by the council, the discussion focused mostly on the need to, but, you know, the budgetary need, looking at the rates. To my knowledge, there wasn't specific discussion about affordability or any kind of program for low-income.
I wonder why, because this is not anything new. This has been an increasing challenge. Over those four years, folks were impacted by the pandemic. A lot of folks had to tighten their belts. So if there was ever a moment to discuss about, if they were making plans to eventually have the increases after their terms were up, then you would have thought that they would have had those conversations before, when they were making a master plan. So I'm wondering what staff has planned as we consider this to put a focus on alternative programs for those who will be adversely impacted dramatically. What can we do to soften the blow?
So if the council would like, we can, when we come back with the final study, we can also include information about an income program, a program that would allow lower-income households to have some form of discount on their water bill, consistent with what's done by other agencies. Several other utilities have income assistance programs. So that can be, if the council would like, we can include that information.
I like what you said. I like what I'm hearing. That's the kind of willingness that we, we need to have. Because if we're going to have the difficult conversations up here and then inevitably we're going to have those difficult conversations in the community. No doubt. And it'll be ongoing. Because what we're looking at is not just one year, but several years of increases. Potentially, an initial dramatic increase. And again, incremental after that. It would be good if we demonstrated our, that we're doing our due diligence to see what other local agencies are doing to mitigate the adverse impacts on the most needy, the most vulnerable in our community. Then I think that would go far in terms of generating some understanding and goodwill among our community. I think it's inevitable, though, should we decide on any one of these options, there's going to be initial shock. And I think we'd be foolish to not prepare ourselves for that. I would like it if in our articulation of our arguments, that there be a focus on explaining what would happen the past four years in terms of poor leadership by the previous council. That's all of the comments I have at this time. I don't have any further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito. Mayor Protem, Lynda Johnson, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one question. If you can please confirm again, that is it true that the city does subsidize current sewer and water rates for our residents?
So Alvin, if you can go back a couple of slides that show the dollar amounts. I believe we had a, of actuals for the prior year and then a...
Slide three, slide three.
Thank you. So yes, the, the two sub-bullets that have the fiscal years, and those are the subsidies, if you will. It's the amount that's drawn from the general fund to support the water fund. Water fund is one of our enterprise funds that best practice is that operate like a business where the expenditures should be wholly covered by the users, the ratepayers. And in this case, what we collect from the ratepayers is less than what it actually costs. So in the prior fiscal year, we were looking at a $2.8, $2.9 million subsidy or support from the general fund. And then for the prior, the subsequent fiscal year, 24, 25, close to $6 million, a general fund support.
So that is $6 million that the city is subsidizing for our residents? Okay, thank you.
Good question, Mayor Protem. I had that same, I had that same concern that year after year, we are using general fund money to subsidize our residents and our businesses' water, water use. So that slide number three shows that in the last two fiscal years, we've used general fund money of almost $9 million because our water rates do not cover the costs of our water infrastructure. So is that a correct way of describing it, City Manager and Alvin? That in the last two fiscal years, we've used almost $9 million of general fund money to cover the difference between our residential and business water rates compared to the actual costs that the city has to pay?
That, that's correct. And I would also add that that's close to $9 million of funds that were not used for other things that could have been used for things such as street resurfacing, tree replacement, sidewalk repair, et cetera, which, as the council knows, is a need and of concern to our residents.
That is the idea of opportunity costs. We are missing out on the opportunity of $9 million that we could have spent on other things for our city, our city's residents and businesses, especially for our city's residents. $9 million that we spent on subsidizing the water used by our residents and businesses out of our general fund. So my question is, why? Because I'm very concerned about what I'm about to ask. Why did the amount we used out of our general fund to subsidize the water rates, the water used by our businesses and resident, businesses and residents? Why did it jump over 100% from the 23, 24 fiscal year to the 24, 25 fiscal year? I'm worried that if we didn't do anything, if we failed to act, if we failed to act as a council and did nothing, is the general fund hemorrhaging going to be even more in this fiscal year than $5.86 million, almost $6 million? Because it jumped over 100% from 23, 24 to 24, 25.
Part of the increase can be explained by just increasing costs generally, but the majority of the increase comes from capital project needs. There are increasing needs on our water system, especially as it relates to compliance with new federal standards for water treatment. So we have in our capital improvement program that you've adopted treatment facilities for our water systems, also the construction of a new water well to help add to a water supply. So the majority of that increase was from capital projects based on the needs that we have for our system.
Okay, thank you. But you do see, Alvin and Chris, you see what I'm saying? That this slide number three is concerning because the general fund support for our residents using water, which has not been addressed at all by the city council since 2021. And it really hasn't been addressed by the city council since 2014 because that's when the seven-year plan went into place. That's the last time the city council took any action. The last time the city council took action on our water rates was 2014. And Peter, I think, used the right word. The action that the council took in 2014 was modest. And it ended into that plan, that 2014 plan, that seven-year plan ended in 2021. So do you agree that it's concerning to this council that you show us a PowerPoint where the general fund spent $3 million in 23, 24 to cover the, the costs of our residents using water, our residents and businesses using water in Cerritos? And then it jumped over $3 million to the, to the last fiscal year? It just, the last fiscal year just ended last month, and it's at almost $6 million? That's concerning, right? For our residents that, Alvin, what, what, what is your opinion on, should the council do nothing? Or should we do something?
Yes, so, so thank you for the commentary and the question, Mayor Yokiyama. So, you know, yes, it is concerning. And it is because the infrastructure is aging. As I'd mentioned, probably over 75% of the infrastructure as part of our water system is over 50 to 60 years old. When I say it's near the end of its useful design life, it means it's, it's potentially going to fail, and it's coming soon. We don't know when, right? It's like driving an old car that you haven't fixed in a long time. It's still running, but one day it's going to break and you're going to need to fix the car. But we may not have money in the bank. So the reason that the projects have doubled is because it's attributed to the C1 water well. We needed to start design on that. The C5 water well, which is a new water well, which we need to start building. And then there was another, the chlorine modific, chlorine room modifications to the C4 well, we needed to start design. And we also paid, we started the, we had to pay money for the water master plan. So, you know, normally, cities would stagger construction of their well projects slowly. You build one, bank some money, pay for it, bank some money again, build it. Each one of these wells, normally a well costs around four, maybe $5 million. The challenges with our wells is that they also need treatment. So we not only have to drill with a well, we also have to build the building, and then we have to put treatment on top of it. So instead of having a four to $5 million project, it's going to be closer to six to nine million. And we have three of these wells that we need to, to build treatment on. So it is concerning. You know, we mentioned that the projects, the critical projects that need to be built, those absolutely need to be built. If one of our wells fails, we have three wells in operation right now. We pay the water replenishment district $455 per acre foot. And that's a bargain. Because if one of those wells fail and we can't pump water out of the ground, then we have to purchase import water. The cost of import water is $1,565. It's over three times the cost. So if one of our wells were to fail, the cost, additional cost to us is an additional cost of approximately $3 million per year. And when that well goes down, it's going to take us a year to design the well. It's going to probably take us another year to year and a half to test it and build it. It's, we're probably looking at two to three years before the new well could be in operation. So in that time, we're buying import water from the state water project. And it's going to cost us an additional nine, potentially $10 million over the course of getting the new well built. So yes, it is a little bit concerning. So action does need to be taken eventually. And that's why we have the water rates here. The critical projects we've staggered based on the priority. But we do have three wells that need to be built soon. And so we are working on well C4. Well, C1 will be the next well that will be completed when C4 is near completion. We have eyes on C5, which is a new water well. And then ultimately, we have to revisit C2. They all need to be redone. They all need treatment. And, you know, as it stands, they all need to be rebuilt and rebuilt soon. And it's, they're, they're not going to last another 20, 25 years.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. And so I was thinking about, again, the last two years, the last two fiscal years, the city of Cerritos and our general fund has hemorrhaged nine, almost $9 million covering the, covering the residents and businesses' use of water as, as it costs, you know, as the costs are, as the city's cost to provide that water, that we had to hemorrhage $9 million out of our general fund. But you only put it for the last two fiscal years. So this hemorrhaging has been for more than just the last two years. Is that right?
Yes, so the, the, in the previous, the loan that was written off was $10.8 million for amount of money that was accumulated from the water fund. And that was because rates weren't high enough to be able to cover all of the operating costs.
That's why the general fund support in the slide is just for the last two fiscal years? Right?
Well, yeah, so this is the, this is the unreimbursable fund amount.
Because before that, the previous city council, which I was a part of, we wrote off the amount that the city paid to subsidize water. When there was an actual fund that kept track of that number that the city was paying out of its general fund in the previous years. How much did we write off for water again?
$10.8 million.
Okay, so we wrote off $10.8 million, which equals the $10.8 million that the city paid out of the general fund in previous years because the rates we were charging residents and businesses didn't cover the actual cost of the city. Correct?
That is correct.
So $10.8 million, that's separate from this $9 million. Is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
So we're talking about approximately $20 million, combining the write, the write-off in these last two fiscal years, $20 million coming out of the general fund to cover the costs of the water that it costs our city, that the residents and the businesses are using. Right?
Yes.
So, City Manager, what could you have done with $20 million? That's an opportunity cost question, and it's rhetorical. Okay? Okay. So I will now open for public comments on this item. Kira Chahan.
Good evening. I am so glad to hear the discussion because we had no idea of the details. All we saw was one item, five pages, and that's the only information we had to go by. However, it appears that we have a structural, long-term utility problem. There are no easy answers. I can make arguments for and against. At the core, we know that infrastructure, road, bridges, sewers, water power, all need to be invested in, period like 20 or 30 years. If I was a person, I'd tell you, beg, steal, or borrow. But since you're a wealthy city, begging is not going to work. Stealing is not going to work unless you want to go to jail. So borrowing is your real option. You may pay for the infrastructure by repairs by general obligation bonds, revenue bonds. You may take out a loan from a bank. You may get money from federal or state government specifically for infrastructure. Drastic as it sounds, you may sell off some of your property. At the point that I read this article, this project was so vague, I had no idea what was being proposed here. It said water infrastructure, CIP. I didn't know whether it means water, water plus sewer, water plus sewer plus treatment plant. So I look forward to seeing the very detailed plan. You know, what amazes me is that we can talk about opportunity cost. I can point to several opportunity costs within the city where we lose a lot more. Water is a fundamental right. I need to find an answer that is not that drastic, but brings equity back. I know what it takes to invest. If I have a house and I don't repair it, it is going to crumble. If term I invest it, it's going to cost me a lot of money. But at some point, I have to invest in my house. At some point, the city needs to invest. Long-term projects require investment and not just through payments by the residents or the businesses. This is too drastic. This is way too drastic. If you recover the money, will the cost stable out over the years? I don't know. I need to some real fiscal plans. I lived in Los Angeles before I came to, so I paid a lot more. I was eternally thankful when I came to Cerritos. I paid a lot less for my utilities here than I ever did in L.A. However, some rules must change. If you are going to propose such a drastic water rate increase, you must also rescind the rule that you must have water-based plant in your front garden. Let me save some money. Give people some options. It's not just, oh, I have the hammer and I'm going to force this down on you. You know what's going to happen with the residents get upset over this one. I do understand that we need to have some sort of a structured rate increase and also tell the people, we haven't done shit in 50 years. We need to fix- And also tell the people, we haven't done shit in fifty years, we need to fix it. So bring back a plan that encompasses all three elements. Water, sewer, and what about that little power plant that's still leaking money? So please find us a better answer that's comprehensive, that the residents can live with. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Jocelyn.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Yeah, I'm here to also, I was surprised when I saw the rate increase. It was, I thought it was going to be happening tonight with a vote, so I made sure I got, got in here to see what's happening because it's definitely something that came totally out of the blue to see such a, a rate increase. I could see, you know, hearing what's been happening in the infrastructure repairs have not been kept up. But I, I don't know why, it seems like every budget you have, a percentage of what you're, what you're collecting is going to be put aside for long-term capital improvements. And I mean, we do that as a city, that's why we have a general fund. And I believe that at this point, you need to look at the general fund and see how much of this should be paid by the general fund versus by the individuals. Because I, I'm doing house repairs now and I know I'm not going to just go and pay for it out of my paycheck. You know, I've got to, I've had to save up to do things that I want to do to my house. Otherwise, they're not going to get done or they're not going to get done very well. And same thing should be for the water fund, you know. Who on, who with the city here hasn't been paying attention to what needs to be done and asking for the money previously to get the work done? And, you know, I almost had a lot of neighbors here with me tonight. I'm glad they didn't come yet because it's not quite time to speak about this. But right away, seeing what kind of, what's going to be happening to our monthly rates. Even, even the rates that did go up a couple of years ago, we get charged more for the water usage. So I'm very careful, I, when I'm washing, washing vegetables off, I collect that water, I use that water, water my tree, water my plants because I'm trying to be conservative. But suddenly that's all going out the window because we're going to be getting double and if not triple our rates in a monthly, monthly bill. And I'm getting close to retirement, I'm not going to have the, you know, ongoing income. So I'm going to be taking away from my, you know, retirement income to pay a higher water bill. And it seems like that it's because of irresponsibilities of, of what's been happening up till now. So really hope that you'll consider the general fund. You know, I don't think it should all come out of the people who have been responsible to pay this. But thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Pasquale.
Good evening. The information presented and the questions that you guys answered already have been insightful. So it has changed what I planned to talk about. So first of all, I think that we should have comprehensive infrastructure investment. Like, I don't like the plan of like, just do the critical part and let's ignore the other stuff. I feel like we've been doing that and that's what got us here, right? We talked about how much it, we have in our like backlog of things that the city needs to fix and repair that we just keep not funding and we just kick it down the road. It's the gentleman who talked about the trees on his street before, it's the same kind of thing. We take them all down drastically at once because we didn't plan like a slow phase out before they got too big, before they got too wieldy. We could have dealt with them, let's take a quarter of them away and put in little trees. And then as those grow, we can take another quarter of them away. But we don't, we do things at the last minute when it's dire. And I think some of the answers tonight were good in saying that like, we're driving this old car and we know it's going to break at some point, so maybe we should replace it before it's an emergency, right? So the thing is though, that these infrastructure updates, do they really come out of the residents' bills? Is that where we get the money for it? Does it make sense to fully fund this comprehensive thing and have people's bills tripled in less than a year from now? And then what, I think it's like quadruple after that? I don't, I don't know, I didn't get out my calculator. But those are really, really drastic numbers. I would love to see scenario one where we fully fund everything, but that we keep having general fund support at least somewhat for a while. Maybe five years, maybe longer than five years, but there's got to be some happy medium beyond what this shows. The other thing is, is that we only bill water every other month. If you're going to double the water rate, none of these plans are going to keep it less than that, right? Can you bill it monthly? As a lot of people live by their monthly expenses, month to month, they don't have a whole lot extra. So if you took that two-month bill that's now double and you build it monthly, like that might give a lot of relief to people who are going to be shocked by this, right? I, by the fifth of the month, you know, I can make a lot of payments. But if it's, you know, anyway. So as somebody whose finances are month to month, I think a, if you're going to really increase the rates, you've got to also figure out how to spread out that billing for people. This is going to be a huge shock to people. I texted this five-page document to my husband and he was real scared by it. And so I do think, like, I hear you that we need to do the infrastructure repair. I agree. Also, I agree that you can't make people have green lawns if the water rates are this high. But, okay, I don't know if this really has to do with it. I had somebody ask me recently, I visited a neighborhood in Cerritos. And usually you go into a neighborhood in Cerritos and all the houses are beautiful. And I go into this neighborhood and now the trims are all cracked and the yard has this. Like, I can't believe they're not getting notices. But when we as a city have put our repairs, pushed our repairs to the side, when our streets have potholes, when our trees are not kept up, when our, when all those things have been happening for all these years, and I do notice the increased road construction lately, so thank you guys. It is hard to then go and say, residents, you need to keep your house perfect. But we can have, you know, these park projects that aren't getting done or these things that are old or these things that are falling apart or the potholes. We have to, as a city, keep the infrastructure up if you want to expect your residents to keep their homes up. And so I, I don't know, I have a really hard time with this sixty-five dollars going to two hundred and twelve or a hundred and fourteen in less than a year. That sounds crazy, crazy. But I do know the rates need to increase. But I feel like we've got to have a better plan than this. Okay, thank you.
So which scenario did you say you liked?
I mean, I want us to have comprehensive infrastructure investment, like I want plan one.
Which scenario?
Scenario one, but-ish. Scenario one with the general fund support of scenario two.
Thank you.
I don't know why it has to be one or the other.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers on this item? City clerk, please announce for the record the written comments received for this item.
Thank you, mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text unredacted copies of the three written comments submitted by the deadline for item nine A. Requests for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk during regular business hours.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, I will close the public comment period. I will bring up the written comments that were submitted. One of the written, one of the three written comments was submitted by Norma and Alan Williamson. And they asked the city council to consider a number of items to help residents mitigate the increased rate hikes. For resident, to help mitigate the increased rate hikes for residents and businesses that are proposed in this agenda item. They gave some, four items to help mitigate the increased right, rate hikes. So can staff please look at those mitigating items and let the council know if those are ways we can help the residents deal with the rate hikes? And then actually, the two other written comments are from the same person. And in both written comments, Stephen Shea talks about the same concern that this city council has is if the city, the city can please make sure to consider and offer a low-income program for our water rates. So just like our coun-, my council colleagues brought up, and I agree that we should please take into account our low-income families, our low-income residents. Can, can staff please advise the council regarding a proposal for a low-income resident program for water rates? Does the council have any additional questions or comments, council member Sei?
Thank you, mayor. Back to the rate again, I just, as we heard the public comment about the rate of the water, the sewer, and with the last one, the PowerPoint, I'd like to see all together, more detail. And just for clarification, mayor, today, it's just informational today, right? To vote for the, seeking the vice and the council member give the vice and staff will prepare that and come back on the October the twenty-eighth, am I right? Today, today's the vote. We'll give our advice.
Yeah, well, we're gonna, we are asked to provide direction
Okay.
to the city, to city staff. So this is not an informational item. We are going, we, the, the city staff is asking us to give them direction.
I don't like the rate.
Part of the proposal is they have proposed scenario one, scenario two A, and scenario two B.
Two A, I kind of look at that really kind of most like in between that, am I correct? Two A, it's kind of more, well, you have the chart, can you present the charts again?
While we're pulling up the charts, I'll just explain that. So scenario one is critical and unfunded projects with rate increases over time. Two A and two B are both, are just critical projects only, but it's really the rate of change that's different. The scenario two A is a more rapid increase at first with a steady increase over time, where more of a flat increase, whereas scenario two B is a more, the, the increases are spread out more evenly over the five years.
But then the rates like fifty percent, twenty-five percent, thirty percent versus other, it's a five percent, five percent following the, the year of the twenty-twenty-seven.
Yes, scenario two A would be a, a higher increase in the first year and then subsequent years would be a smaller increase.
I hate to say this, we are subsidized for them already. I remember there were, mayor has mentioned about almost a hundred percent, it was one million versus nine million, we're kind of ninety percent subsidized the water for the resident. Can we hold, give, still keep, I mean, I know we're going to run into the negative somewhere somehow there. But this is dramat-, this really too fast increase on this matter on the, from the current one to the February twenty-twenty-six. I personally like it two A because more smoothly, not jump to the gun right away. And I mean, I was like, I, I know you folks like just one time get it done. There's no way you can do that to the resident. Just piggyback when we mentioned about the thousand California Edison, they do have a pay scale applied to our city. If I remember correctly, if I can follow that, we can use the same way they, they use our resident. That will be, that will be our future focus on to, for the water bill, if you can go look into that. But can we just play a little bit of the number still? And we subsidize a little bit because in the future, we have so much race in there, so much, we might have other thing put on the ballot to vote. Then I'd rather be more conservative to the, to the resident rather than just one shot and get it done, get it over. That's my concern. The table that you presented to us, I wish you can adjust the number, that we really appreciate it. I like the way you proposed, actually, I know you try hard, but however, I don't like this shock. It's like you dropped me on the cold water.
Yes, thank you for the, the, the feedback, council member Sei. So with regards to scenario two, when developing the scenario, staff really looked at historically, you know, how much general fund we have and looking forward, how much general fund could we, could, you know, be amenable to the city council? And that's worth nine point five million dollars over the course of the five years. If the will of the council is to lower this, this is pay as you go. The option could be increasing that general fund support to soften the blow. So that, that is an option and that's why staff is here with the direction. But for scenario one, the reason the rate is so high is because we eliminate general fund support as soon as possible. For scenario two, it's assuming that we're going to have general fund support over the first four years and then it goes to zero at year five. And that decision was made based on previous comments from council, the desire to, previous direction to, in twenty-twenty-three, to look at ways to eliminate the deficit. And so we're, you know, that is, that is the goal. But we understand if, if council would like to, to revisit that.
What I'm trying to say today is I don't want this kind of dramatic just go up like this. And then we do, as far as I know, twenty, I think twenty-twenty, I did in kind of research a little bit of our city, we do have some property. I hate to say this to the staff, you know, the prob-, we should think about the property. Our, we have so many property in our Cerritos, what's the chance we can sell out and change the zone and build the building, which is going to be a winning situation for the school board? I mean, in the future, but not right now. I know it's going to take a little while to do that, but however, maybe you should consider that too to help the resident kind of gradually, slowly, I mean, not gradually, it's kind of move on, but not this three-time percent, three percent of the raise. That's way too much. But I do want to recommend, I do want to remind the resident too, our rate is still low, even though if we go up, we probably going to meet at the standard, not below anymore, the way I'm looking at your number.
Yes.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, council member Sei. Council member Hong, do you have any questions or comments?
Can, yes, I do want to make a, point out something and ask the city manager to emphasize it and explain to it. Can you change the slide to the last page, the next steps? Please, thank you. I want to remind, I want to understand, or maybe city manager can do a better explanation. On January twenty-second, I'm assuming after our decision, and this is the next step that you proposed to us. So, and to the residents, okay? So in January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-six, say if we have the public hearing, everything is done. And when you say to January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-six, it's a deadline to receive written, written protests and public hearing to adopt rates. Can you explain more detailly about the written protest?
Yes, so this whole process for increasing water rates is governed by Prop two eighteen. That's a voter initiative that sets parameters for public agencies to adopt rate increases generally. So we'd be following the, the, the process prescribed in the law as it relates to this. And in that process, we are supposed to provide a minimum period of time to notify the public. We have to provide the public with a written notice, and then again, these are We have to provide the public with a written notice, and then again, these are, um, uh, the rate payers, the property owners, residents and businesses, um, in, in the city. And we also need to outline for them a process where anyone can, um, submit a written protest. And, uh, if the city receives a majority written protest from the, uh, the pool of rate payers, in other words, fifty percent plus one, then the city, um, would be, not be able to adopt those new rates. If the city receives a number less than that, then the city council can then proceed with adopting the rates that have been outlined. And, um, the plan right now, as it's been outlined, is to have that final public hearing in January twenty twenty-six with the idea that rates would be in effect in February. Um, keep in mind that in the budget that was adopted, um, just a few weeks ago, um, it was adopted assuming there would be a rate increase, um, and that's why we have the February date. We assume that a certain, uh, part of the fiscal year would have an increase in revenues in the water fund. Um, so if the council, um, takes a different direction, then we would be looking at, um, increase the, the gap, the deficit that from what was originally adopted by the council.
Thank you.
I'll also add that this is slightly different than, say, a tax that would be coming on the ballot for uh, the city residents to vote on. Under Prop two eighteen, like the city manager explained, uh, any rate that goes to a property owner that has to be increased, has to be quote unquote approved by the property owner, but in the sense that you, the city council, and you, the city are going to propose a rate increase, and it will be increased unless fifty percent plus one vote or protest. Uh, in the city of Cerritos, there is about fifteen thousand housing units. Uh, there may be a different number of property owners that would have to speak or move forward to protest this, uh, proposed rate increase if one were to move forward. So if there's fifteen thousand, uh, rate payers, um, housing units, water users, then, uh, what is it? Seventy-five hundred plus one would have to actually write written comments and protest it. If you only get seven thousand, it moves forward, which means the rates will be able to increase. And the timeline is a minimum of forty-five days to the, uh, residents or property owners, uh, that informs them that they can protest what the proposed rates will be. And unless you get the seventy-five hundred plus one, you can go ahead and, uh, implement the rate increases that are being proposed. That's obviously unlike the tax where you have to actually get fifty percent plus one to approve the rates.
What is the number of days again?
It's a minimum of forty-five days.
And we're giving them about seventy-five days?
Yes, and, and the reason why is because, uh, because of the timing of where we're at and when the final studies will be available. Um, we didn't want to have the, the end of that period be during the, um, holiday season. Um, that might be a, a complaint that could be received. So just to address that potential issue, we've, we're proposing having that period go longer, well beyond the, the holiday season, so that people have adequate time after travel, et cetera, to respond.
Yeah, because I calculate we're giving them seventy-six days instead of the legally required forty-five days. So we're giving them an extra month. Any other questions? Councilmember Hong, or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. Councilmember Polito, any questions or comments?
No further questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments?
No more, no comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Johnson, any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, I do have a question for staff, though. I kind of like the idea what, uh, Ms. Hasquaw brought up. Is there a way to do monthly billing to lessen the impact to our residents?
So, um, right now, as was mentioned, we do have a bimonthly process, so residents, uh, property owners get their bill every two months. If we went to a monthly bill, that would double the number of bills that our staff are sending out and the double the number of payments that we're receiving. So it would significantly impact the, the processing. Um, I can defer to Mr. Kemp who oversees that team to see if he'd like to elaborate on what that might mean for our staff. It could possibly mean needing additional staff to deal with the, just the, the quantity of the, of the load, but I'll defer to Mr. Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, and I think, um, um, you're right on target there. We have a, a pretty minimal water billing staff. Um, we have one full-time, uh, staff member and, and one part-time staff member, so it would essentially uh, double the workload on the, uh, the billing and, and receipt of payment side. Um, so it would certainly, um, probably be something we have to look into is the, the staffing requirements to keep up with that volume of, of billing.
Okay, I, I, you know, we're asking a lot of our residents, uh, with the sticker shock of almost doubling our, their bimonthly payments. I actually would like to look into, uh, staff time if we were going to do monthly billing. If I could have, uh, do any, can I ask concurrence on that? Yeah.
You have concurrence.
Thank you.
But I do want to comment on that later.
Yeah, so I, I do have comments, you know, the discussion on rate increases, uh, and sewer increase, oh, water rate and sewer services has been in the works for a while. Uh, previous council directed staff to present water and sewer rate adjustment options. And now we have a new council in place, and now we are tasked to make some of these hard decisions. Um, you know, nobody wants to make these hard decisions, but you know, that's what we were elected to do. Uh, currently, the water and sewer rates are subsidized by the city. Uh, this is not best practice, and this is not sustainable. Um, I supported and voted along with the previous council's decision to look into our rates and that they can be adjusted without causing a drain on our city's budget. So I think, um, I want to thank Robert for reminding us that, uh, you know, the budget that we just adopted includes the water and sewer rate adjustments. And so you, you're right, if we do not do something with these rates, it's going to increase the gap in the budget that we just adopted, and then next year, when we close out, it'll be a bigger gap. So just wanted to remind our, our, our council members, this is what you guys voted for, you, you voted yes on a budget with, um, sewer and water rates that were already been adjusted with the potential rate increases. So, um, I'm gonna be consistent with, with my pass vote to approve a water rate study. And yes, on approving a water rate adjustment to su- sustain, to support long-term sustainability. And my yes vote is also consistent with my yes vote when we adopted the budget, um, which included these rate adjustments. You know, our subsidized water and sewer rates come out of our general fund. And, uh, since we entered budget season, there were opportunities for this council to give ideas or suggestions on how to balance our budget without increasing water and sewer rates. Um, all of us have been briefed on July fifteenth, when all of us met with our directors and staff to discuss this water rate adjustment. So I appreciate the questions you have brought forth tonight. However, we've all been heavily briefed on this. Um, since July fifteenth till this day of our meeting, there were still opportunities to propose ideas on how we're able to pay for the water without rate adjustments. Um, you know, I'm gonna be consistent with my vote. And I hope you guys realize too, the vote that you placed to adopt the budget, uh, abstentions, as the, uh, city manager said, is not a vote. Um, it's, it's not a yes vote or a no vote, it's saying that you don't want to participate and vote on something. So, uh, those are my comments. Um, I do, uh, want to say that two B is, so I, I agree too. I think, uh, scenario one gives the best outlook to actually address all of the infrastructure that needs to be done. However, um, two B, uh, comes in with the least initial impact and with the most revenue, uh, at the end of the five-year, uh, total. So those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Can I have a one more question?
Yeah, Councilmember Hong, please, feel free.
Thank you. Um, I just want to clarify, okay? I know, um, Mayor Protem always do a very good study. But I want to double check and reconfirm, when we pass a budget, how can we pass a budget based on something we haven't approved?
So the budget is a roadmap. Um, there may be several programs that come about that are, are, that are, as a result of the budget, the budget provides that initial direction to proceed with a program, a project. Uh, similar example is in, in the budget, uh, there's an adopted capital improvement program. We do come back to award a contract to a contractor to actually build the project. So the, um, in the items that were itemized when, um, staff had, uh, brought back potential items to close the deficit, one of them was uh, revenues from a potential water rate increase. Uh, so by including that in there, the assumption is that we would come forth with some sort of increase. Um, the out, the options that have been outlined before you are options related to the degree of the increase, how you want that to look in the first year versus subsequent years. Uh, but the, the budget adoption, um, then led, it came with the understanding that there would be some sort of increase in the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you, but, um, my question, um, I have another question. So what would happen, unfortunately, when the resident declined it? This project didn't go through. What is our budget deficit gonna be even worse?
In the short term, the, uh, any kind of subsidy would need to come from the, uh, general fund. Um, if there is, uh, a majority protest, let's say, we can come back with an evaluation recommendation as to uh, other things that can be cut. Um, it is, it, by that point, we would be in the middle of the fiscal year. We generally do a mid-year review. I'll look at where things are at and can make other adjustments as needed.
Thank you.
Anything else, Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. So I have some comments, maybe questions, but, um, so I, I make sure to ask, you know, I also um, I'm intrigued by the re- by the residents and the businesses having the option of making monthly payments. Okay? Um, because as, um, the speaker said that monthly payments, monthly bills, she said, I think, but monthly payments can help the families help the businesses budget. Just like we budget, they budget, and monthly payments can help them budget. So Peter mentioned the challenges to monthly bills. Okay? Um, but maybe we look at it from the perspective of the residents don't need monthly bills, they just want to know if they can make monthly payments. And for example, this is the only example I can think of, is your property tax bill. They send you in the mail, one property tax bill. They tell you how much the, what does, what's the total amount you owe? But they give you two coupons so you can choose to make two payments for the amount you owe if you choose to make one total payment for the total amount you owe, or split it up into two half-payments to pay the amount you owe. So maybe we can look into sending one bill every, you know, every two months, bimonthly. But we provide information and a clear option to the residents who want to budget, who want to make monthly payments. And we, we provide them with clear information on what their monthly payment is and how they make that monthly payment to satisfy the total amount owed in that bimonthly bill. All right? So that's one thing. And we still are sending one bill every two months, right, Peter? Because I know you guys are working hard. Um, measure C. So in, in two, in, in March two thousand, the residents told the city council and told City Hall, we're not gonna approve measure C. We're not gonna approve the eleven point four million dollars that would have come that year if measure, when, if measure C had passed in March of twenty twenty. They said, figure it out, figure it out, figure out the budgets, figure out the revenues and expenses, but we're not gonna approve measure C, which would have increased the sales tax rate by three quarters of a percent. And that money would have been come from mostly non-Cerritos residents. But the residents, the residents voted and said, figure out how to fund the programs and services of this city somewhere else, because we're not gonna approve measure C, even though all of those visitors to the city of Cerritos who shop and dine here, even though they would have paid most of that eleven point four million doll- eleven point four million dollars, unfortunately, we haven't had that for going on over five years now. And I've said before, five years times eleven point four million dollars is fifty-seven million dollars that we didn't get. And that's actually low, right, Drew? Because every year, our sales tax, uh, total revenue every fiscal year has gone up for the last five years, right? Up, taking into account the pandemic, okay?
Uh, minus this year, sir. Our sales tax revenues are down this fiscal year.
Just this, okay. But every year, it's gone up since two thousand twenty, back in two thousand twenty, we estimated eleven point four million dollars, that was the floor. So every year, we would have gotten more than that, so we would have gotten well over fifty-seven million dollars from measure C, and we didn't get it. So this council is just doing the job that we were elected by the residents to do. They told us, make the tough decisions, make the hard decisions, make the right decisions. Uh, take care of our city to the best of your abilities with the information provide, with the best information provided you by the city manager and his hard-working staff. And the answer is, we've already hemorrhaged twenty million dollars out of our general fund supporting, subsidizing the water usage of our residents and our businesses. That doesn't include the current fiscal year. So we've hemorrhaged twenty million dollars of general fund money. Robert already reminded us what opportunity cost is, that twenty million dollars went to subsidize water rates, water usage of the residents and businesses, instead of spending that twenty million dollars on something else. And I think our residents and businesses can give us a list of things they want us to spend money on. So there's also some idea of fairness, pay for what you use. Pay for what you use. Our residents and businesses are using water, it costs the city a certain amount of money. We're not asking to make a profit, we're not asking to make a profit off of our water utility. We just want to stop losing money and hemorrhaging twenty million dollars. And we didn't get the fifty-seven million dollars minimum we would have gotten from measure C, which was a clear direction from the residents to do something. The residents gave the council, in my, in, in my understanding, they gave us a clear direction. We don't want you to have fifty-seven million dollars through the past five years to fund things like the services and programs provided by our water utility. Because measure C was, the, the things that were supposed to be funded by measure C included our infrastructure. There was, it was clear in the, um, measure C language and the analysis of measure C provided to the voters, that this money will go towards public safety and infrastructure, among other, among the other things that were listed. And again, our residents said, we are not gonna give you And again, our residents said, we are not going to give you that 11.4 million dollars annually, that 57 million dollars the past, the past five years. You got to get that money somewhere else, so. What, what are we supposed to do? We didn't get that 57 million dollars. We've been hemorrhaging 20 million dollars in general fund money to cover the, the water that our residents and businesses are using. So this council is making tough decisions. And we started, so. So measure C has led us to today. And, and we made decisions the last couple of months. This council is acting instead of doing nothing. And we started that during the budget process when we were facing a budget deficit for this fiscal year, 25, 26 of 2.9 million dollars. And I said, and, and some of my council colleagues agreed with me, we can't look our residents in the face and approve a 2.9 million dollar budget deficit budget. We have to make the tough decisions because we don't have the 11.4 million dollars additional sales tax revenue this year, like we haven't had the past five years to cover all of these expenses, public safety, infrastructure, water, water rate subsidies, sewer subsidies. We don't have that 11.4 million dollars. So we have to figure out, how do we deal with the 2.9 million dollar budget deficit that was in this 25, 26 fiscal year? And, and for people trying to distinguish between the actual day-to-day water usage of our residents, our business and the infrastructure, the water infrastructure. Again, measure C would have helped us pay for infrastructure. It was designed to pay us, help us pay for infrastructure. And the money was going to be general fund money. Right, Robert? Measure C, general fund money.
Yes, that's correct.
So then, so maybe we would have a different analysis about if we want to subsidize water usage to a degree. If we had that extra 11.4 million dollars. So we could have subsidized water usage. We could have taken care of infrastructure across the board in our city, including our water infrastructure. We don't have measure C. So I'll, I'll push measure C to the side because we don't have that. We don't have measure C. We don't have the 11.4 million dollars annually. We don't have the 57 million dollars over the past five years. And we're not going to get the 11.4 million dollars for the 25, 26 fiscal year. We don't have measure C. So we got to figure out how to get it somewhere else. We got to figure out what we're going to do. We're going to take action instead of cry that, instead of cry that, oh my, oh my gosh, water rates are going up. But what, what are we supposed to do? Not raise water rates, do nothing and make things worse every year, which some people think that's what the ABC school district did. So this was presented to us in our budget study sessions. We discussed this in our budget study sessions because we were facing a 2.9 million dollar budget deficit that I wasn't happy with, some of you weren't happy with, maybe all of you weren't happy with. Our residents don't want us to have a 2.9 million dollar budget deficit. So we got a list of adjustments, budget adjustments that we can make. And the city council was informed that one of the options of our budget adjustments that we considered at the June 12, 2025 city council meeting was the water rate adjustment that's before us today in item 9A. Item 9A, water rate adjustment, that's what we approved in the June 12, 2025 city council meeting. It was considered as one of our revenue adjustments to deal with our 2.9 million dollar budget deficit. And the city council approved it. We approved the water rate adjustment of 1,440,000. We approved it unanimously. This city council approved it unanimously. And as a result, our budget deficit for 2025, 26, for 25, 26, we had an adjustment of 1,440,000 that we're not spending out of our general fund budgeted for the 25, 26 fiscal year. So what, I'll just do the math. What this council courageously did on June 26, when we approved the budget, unanimously, we approved the budget unanimously. When we did that on June 26, we got it down to a budget deficit of 407,000. Because I was not, I told, I announced, I will, I am not going to approve a budget with a 2.9 million dollar budget deficit. And you guys worked together with me and we had a robust discussion, a robust dialogue, a robust conversation and we made cuts. We made adjustments to revenue. We made adjustments to expenses, including the water rate adjustment of 1,440,000. And we approved that unanimously on June 12. So for example, if we didn't approve that water rate adjustment then, or if we didn't do it now, that adjustment, that revenue adjustment of 1,440,000, we add that back to the budget deficit that we approved on June 26. We add it back to the 407,000, guess what? That means we would have a budget deficit of 1,847,000. Because we're too scared to take action that our residents elected us to do our job. So on June 12, 2025 city council meeting, this city council unanimously approved the water rate adjustment of 1,440,000 and the sewer rate adjustment of 11,000. We approved it unanimously and that helped us on that day to, uh, lower our initial budget deficit of 2.9 million dollars. And then this adjustment and all the other adjustments we approved as a council, we got together on June 26 to approve the budget. And you might all recall, and even on June 26, we further cut IT projects and maintenance, another 293,000 because it was so important for this council to work together as a council, stand together and approve a budget on June 26 that had a 407,000 dollar budget deficit instead of the 2.9 million budget dollar, 2, 2.9 million budget deficit that was presented to us by the city manager and his staff. I'm proud of that 407,000 dollar budget deficit in the approved budget because that represents to me that this council worked together in a compromise to get a budget that we can live with. Because that's what a compromise is. A compromise is when everybody's not ecstatic, everybody can live with it. We can move forward. And then we gave clear direction to the city manager on what to do with the approved budget. With the approved budget, with a budget deficit of 407,000, we gave him clear direction on what to do in the upcoming, in this fiscal year, which included the water rate adjustment of 1,440,000, which again, we did approve as a council unanimously on June 12, 2025. So if, if we don't do a water rate adjustment, you know, based on the majority decision of this council, if we don't do a water rate adjustment, that means we just decided that our budget deficit for 25, 26 is going to be not 407,000 budget deficit. It's going to be 1,847,000 dollars budget deficit for 25, 26 fiscal year. So what's always going to be here and facing us as a council, because you could use it for almost anything. I think one of the speakers said that you could always talk about opportunity costs. So here's another example of opportunity costs. If we don't make this long overdue, long, long, long overdue water rate adjustment. If we don't do this, it's another example of things. If we don't do the water rate adjustment, it's another opportunity of opportunity cost. There's going to be things that we're not going to be able to provide to residents and our businesses because we're going to continue subsidizing water usage of our residents and our businesses out of our general fund. And unfortunately, it really bothers me. I'm almost angry, maybe I am angry, that Alvin and Chris showed us in the PowerPoint that last year we spent six, almost 6 million dollars out of our general fund to subsidize the water usage of our residents and business as compared to the actual cost to our city. 6 million dollars just in the last fiscal year, 9 million dollars in the last two fiscal years, 20 million dollars total, taking into account the enterprise fund amount we wrote off. That's 20 million dollars in opportunity cost we didn't spend on something else. Okay? So our residents, I need us to protect our residents by informing them. We need to inform the residents. Okay, let's stop being concerned and worried about our residents not knowing what's going on and not knowing what's going to happen. And, and, uh, what's the word? And, and, and speculating they're going to be shocked next year when the water bill goes on. Instead, let's be a proactive city council and take action and help them understand what's going on so that instead of three residents coming here to public comment, you know, maybe more would want to participate in the democratic process and attend meetings and understand what's going on, not just the water rates. So the things we could do is first of all, proposition 200, proposition 218 is designed to protect utility, uh, rate payers, right, city manager?
That's correct.
Proposition 218 protects rate payers, right?
Yes, it provides a process where it's transparent and provides an opportunity for public to directly weigh in on the decisions.
So we already have, this is already a proposition 218 process. A proposition 218 rate adjustment proposal. This city council cannot automatically just raise rates. All we can do is make a decision, provide the city manager with instructions to start the proposition 218 process, which protects rate payers as designed by the state to provide them with information and give them a method to respond and to make their voices heard. In addition to the proposition 218 process, which is one way to deal with this speculation about our residents being shocked by, by, by any, any adjustment to the water rate. Let's again, take pro, let's be proactive so our residents aren't shocked. In addition to the proposition 218 procedure, state required prop 218 procedure, let's also continuously provide information about what the city of Ceritos and the city, and the city hall and the city council is doing about water rate adjustments. Let's provide information continuously in the water bills. Okay? Can we do that? Let's continuously, they get a bill every two months, right, Peter? Okay, so every bill, let's give them the most updated information in the bill in big, big point, big point type on what's going on with the water rate. Let's use our social media to update the residents in real time on what's going on with water rates. Let's use our city of Ceritos email blast to continuously inform the residents in real time what's going on in, on what's going on with water rates. Let's use TV3 the same way. And let's use our city meetings. Every city council meeting, starting now, let's give them an update about the water rates. And then let's give that same update at every single city commission meeting and every city single committee meeting. Okay? And let's just, let's just do everything that the city of Ceritos and the city council can do to inform the residents to mitigate this speculated shock that the residents are going to have when the bill goes up in December, in February of 26, if there is a water rate adjustment. Okay? But one thing is starting effective immediately, well, all these things we should do effective immediately, depending on what the council's direction is, um, when we vote. But we have to provide information in every single water bill. Because that's, that's what they're, that's, that's where they're, what they're paying. That's what they're paying. They're, they get a water bill, they pay it. So it's, I think it's just so reasonable to for the city and the city council and our water division and, and the rate payers to have that information about the water rate adjustment in their next water bill. So is it coming out in July or August?
Thank you for the question, uh, mayor. The, uh, billing is actually done by area, so we're doing billings every week. Uh, so depending on each area, I think we need different areas.
I hear you. So depending on what happens today on this agenda item, we have to give them an update, updates in the water bills effective immediately. Okay, city manager?
Yes, what we'll do is we'll put together a communications plan and then you outlined several, um, helpful items that we would include, uh, different venues to provide information to the public. Uh, water bill being one, um, social media and others. Um, and to the extent that we can include information in our water bill, we will do so.
Okay, so I, I hope we see consistency in the direction. I, I hope we see consistency and not confusion from the city council in the direction that we've been giving you, city manager Robert Lopez and your staff about how to deal with our, uh, water rate adjustments. Again, this was unanimously approved by the council on June 12, the water rate adjustment, which affected our 25, 26 budget by 1,440,000. The council gave you unanimous direction on, on June 12, how to move, how to proceed regarding our water rates, our water rate adjustment. Alvin, we gave you that direction on June 12 with our unanimous vote. And then on June 26, we confirmed it in our budget approval in the approval of the overall 25, 26 budget when the council unanimously approved the budget, which contained this water rate adjustment. And I'm very thankful to my council for working together over the whole budget process, numerous meetings. over the whole budget process, numerous meetings, numerous budget study sessions, culminating in the budget approval meeting on June twenty-six, where we compromised together and approved the budget unanimously. So thank you for letting me share my comments about item nine A, water rate adjustment options. Council members say you wanted to, you wanted to share some questions or comments?
Mayor, I really want to say you are such a great leader. I do want to say something like this because I, I see it last time you compromising flexible, change the budget and make us all five to zero to, to agree what we accepted. On water rates, I never say no, I say yes, we do need it. Actually Drew had really, not Drew, I'm sorry, Ryan had a really good table about the local city, the water rate compared to our city rate. It's our city rate is low. I think that should be on the Facebook everywhere to show to the people. I did have a couple of meeting with the local residents already, I did. And some of them, I had a meeting in here regarding the water, waters rate. I think manager, I want to thank you so much for helping me coordinate, invited people, local resident to be the city office here and discuss with them about the water bill rates. And most of the people really surprised that what we are subsidizing and they did not know. And now they know and they agree, they say they should be raised. But however, there's amendment on the table right now. I think council, Mayor Protem had mentioned about, because you have a scenario one, two A and two A and two B, apparently that we probably need a give a guidelines of which one we're going to. But my questions here, I really like the mayor protein after I think over the mayor, the two B because not shocked the people too much at the beginning, only fifty percent and then gradually get more and more and will meet the standard towards the end. I mean, that's just for critical care right now. But however, the long term, who knows what else can, we might not need to give this much raise, we might change it. And it possible, so the two B to me, I also like it. Two A, I mean scenario one, people hate it. They're really going to be really upset, you're going to make them really angry. If we propose anything else besides that, people will be come back or say no, that's the way I'm looking at. And two B is kind of like I said, gradually smoothly, five percent, five percent. But two, two, two B, and the two A is gradually five percent. And you get fifty percent at the beginning and one ten percent increase. Then two B, you are kind of slowed down, it's like a fifty percent. However, the rate, I had a little question here. If you're talking about currents at sixty-five point eleven, but then you talk to fifty percent, I calculate it's about hundred dollar unless my calculation is wrong. You know, you have sixty-one point one one, times fifty percent. It came out with like less than hundred, ninety something. So is this the way I'm, is calculated or has some base rate different there?
Yeah, so the difference is, so the percentages in the, in the second table on page three of the report do not correspond with the dollar amounts in the bottom table. The percentages are revenues to the city, but there, there's different types of rates, commercial, well, there's different meter sizes that would result in different increases to the individual user. And because we have different numbers of people with different meter sizes, you can't take the percentages at the top and apply them to the percentages at the bottom.
Okay.
But generally speaking, it would be, and again, the table at the bottom is sort of an average. It's assuming a typical, single family home that uses the twenty, a hundred cubic feet. It, it, the actual amounts will vary by individual property based on your actual bill. So you know what your current bill is, you can, you understand if it's lower or higher than sixty-five dollars, you can roughly estimate what your own bill would be relative to that.
Okay, for example, my bill is a hundred ten dollars, sometimes fifty percent, one point five on that, right? That's how much you could possible pay?
So it would be, it would be not fifty percent, it would be a different increase. The, from the sixty-five dollars to in the first year, the hundred and fifteen dollars, hundred and fourteen dollars, help me out with the math, it's more like a eighty, ninety percent.
Raise, increase eighty-nine percent. So in here today, the final mayor, I just want to clarification, do we going to make a decision to go scenario one, two A or two B, is that right? Is that the direction that we're going to?
Thank you for, thank you for your question, council member say. First, do, do any of the council members have any other questions or comments? Do any of the council member, does any of the city council have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, Mayor Protem Johnson?
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to to approve to approve the water rate adjustment scenario two B and provide direction to city staff regarding the preferred, I'm sorry, two B. Should I repeat that?
Second.
Thank you.
It was moved and seconded, it was moved by Mayor Protem Johnson and seconded by council member Polito. Did you get the motion, city, city clerk Cindy Nava?
Thank you, mayor. The emotion I have by, made by Mayor Protem Johnson and seconded by council member Polito is to approve the water rate adjustment and structure scenario two B, supporting critical infrastructure with general fund support phased out over time.
And to be clear, that's not a rate increase, that's just the, the scenario that we'll be working on to, to bring back a, a final water rate study report with the, the additional details needed to begin the Prop two eighteen process.
Correct.
Yes, I, I like that, sorry for interruption. That's what my question about, this is not, we're deciding just going to go to two B. We did this discuss about, we're going to find a way to not to increase that much, right? We do talk about that, we have a discussion about that. We're going to find a way to see is there any way we, our increased rate wouldn't be that high or is there other solution or other method?
Two B would be the scenario that we would build our report on. And ultimately, the council can, that is, that is the, the maximum rates that can be adopted in the future, future, in future years, the city council can opt to adjust lower, we, you can't just go higher.
We are going to have another agenda item in a future meeting to further get, again, another report from staff. And this council will be able to discuss it, ask questions and make comments, okay?
Okay, that would be in August, right?
And there were several milestones outlined. August would be an update on other non, non potable water, it would be reclaimed water and sewer. But the final water report would be presented at the October twenty-third meeting. That's when there would be sort of a decision to, to proceed with.
Can you put that, can you put that slide thirteen on the screen?
It's possible to, for the team to put that on.
Just so that the residents can see what you're talking about.
Yes, so there are, we have three utilities we're talking about. We have potable water, which we discussed tonight. We're still working on information to present to you in August related to reclaim water and sewer. And we'll have similar scenarios to, to recommend that we would like direction on. And then following that, we would come back with final reports with the detailed information that was requested in October that then we would, following that, we would, we would request that the city council authorized to proceed with the public hearing process. But that, that final decision would be in October twenty-third.
Okay, let's vote.
The electronic voting is active.
And the motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
I'm going to.
You have something, mayor, you have something, city manager?
Yes, I'm going to ask Mr. Papa to weigh in on a different, on another item as well.
Yes, my apologies for not interjecting earlier. But as part of this item, one point of direction that we're looking for was also with regards to the rate structure, looking to adjust the fixed charge based on the base rate, if I could bring back slide number four. And, and also eliminating the base minimum units. So looking for a council direction, whether or not they are in agreement to update the fixed meter charges based on meter capacity. This makes sure that people pay according to the amount of water that they use.
Is this, i- is this in the agenda report? Is this slide in the agenda report, that this recommended potable water rate structure changes in the agenda report?
It is on page two, the first paragraph of the analysis. The study aims to midway through the paragraph, it says, the study aims to promote equity and fairness by allocating costs proportionally among user categories, which means user meter sizes and ensures that each user pays their fair share based on actual demand and system impact in a manner that aligns with all applicable statutory and regulatory requirements. And I think it's also in the recommendation number one on the last page.
So the scenarios that we laid out may assumed that that would be the case. We just wanted to make that very clear for the council.
Okay, so we just, we just approved scenario two B. We just provided direction to staff to move forward with scenario two B, correct, city manager?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, there's no additional action.
Okay, thank you. So do any of my council colleagues want to make a motion? Okay, I don't see any motions. You know, I just feel like you, the, the issue was confused. The issue was unnecessarily confused right now for this council. I don't agree that with what the city attorney said on that slide is directly follows what's in a paragraph on page two of the agenda report. You know, we have a section called recommendation. If you guys want us to consider something, it has to be more clear. And the issue was confused because of this slide. Was this slide? This was one of the first slides in the PowerPoint. Next time, you know, we got to have these PowerPoints as an attachment to the agenda reports because the residents did not see this PowerPoint as an attachment to the agenda report. Mr. Diamond, when did you provide this PowerPoint to the city?
We've been collaborating on the PowerPoint presentation over the past couple of weeks.
When did you provide this PowerPoint?
I provided the slides that I prepared at the beginning of last week. And then city staff has made additions to it since.
So if he provided it at the beginning of last week, why wasn't it included with the agenda report? City manager?
We, we typically don't attach the PowerPoint presentations to the agenda reports. They're, they're prepared leading up to the meeting. We do aim to make sure that information that's presented is consistent with, with in the report. To your point, we can make sure that that's made more clear in the future.
Thank you. Okay, item nine B. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you. For item nine B, I'll defer to city clerk Cindy Nava to provide an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez, honorable mayor and members of the city council. The item before you is consideration of proposed amendments to the twenty-twenty-five city council meeting schedule and upcoming events. On May seventh, the city council directed staff to schedule a report for review and consideration of canceling the Thursday, October twenty-third regular city council meeting. This meeting conflicts with the Master Chef All Stars Live ticketed event taking place at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. In consideration of other potential conflicts, exhibit one of the agenda report provides a list of upcoming city events and business meetings and conferences. There is no fiscal impact related to the date, to date changes or cancellations of previously scheduled city council meetings. At this time, it is recommended the city council review and discuss the information provided and open public comment and direct staff to cancel the Thursday, October twenty-third city council meeting. And if desired, schedule in lieu a special meeting for Monday, October twenty-seventh at six or seven P M and or direct staff accordingly. This concludes my report and the city manager and I are available to answer any questions the city council may have.
Thank you, city clerk Cindy Nava. Do you have any questions from the council, council member say?
Sir, I apologize for, I, I don't have the city's activity upcoming one for the September, October. I, I mean, only have half pages bottom here today. So we're discussing about cancel the Thursday? Is that the, the direction staff asking for?
The Thursday, October twenty-third council meeting.
I have no comment on that, yeah, respect the staff choice there.
So do you have any other?
No comment, no comment.
Okay. Council member Hong, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Council member Polito, do you have any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Robert and Cindy for the report. As you can see, this council has been busy since they were installed in March. We've been busy attending conferences and community events. And the CCPA has also increased their programming and I appreciate the council supports the theater. So aside from rescheduling the October twenty-third meeting, I'd also like to ask my council to consider rescheduling the September eleven council meeting as there is a conflict with a show at the CCPA. And to also reschedule the August fourteen meeting since there's a conflict with the California League of Cities Women's Caucus that will be held at the Cerritos Library that same evening. Those are the two other considerations I'd like for my colleagues to weigh on.
Mayor, can I ask a question? You say you moved August.
Yes, council member say.
I'm sorry, mayor, just the clarification that you canceled the August fourteen, our council meetings are correct?
Reschedule it, yes.
Okay, to when?
I'll, I'll, I'll leave it up to staff to come back.
Okay, got you, thank you.
So when it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I will now open for public comment on this item. Does Catherine Pasquale have any questions or comments or public comment? You can't talk from there. You have to come up to the microphone. Can you, and then turn in, turn in your name when you have a chance.
I just have a question, isn't August fourteenth the next meeting?
Yes.
So then, wait, how can you wait for staff to come back with it?
Okay. We have to cancel it and I'll go, I'll.
Anyway, that was just, sorry, that's why I was talking to myself, sorry.
If I may, honorable mayor, members of the city council, if the city council would like to schedule a special meeting in lieu of the August fourteen meeting, a special meeting can be scheduled for Monday, August eleventh. And a meeting in lieu of the Monday or a Thursday, September eleventh meeting, we could schedule a special meeting for Monday, September eighth, if that is the council's desire.
I'm sorry, August eleventh, Aug, will be replaced August fourteen? And the other date you said, Cindy?
Monday, September eighth.
Okay, thank you for the public comment. Are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Okay, does the council have any additional question, questions or comments? Council member say? Council member. Councilmember Hong?
Just want to clarify, even we have changed the day, whatever the the time still started from seven o'clock. Just want to verify that, right? Because today we have started from six o'clock. So any special meeting, we still go back to the seven o'clock as we haven't changed. We haven't approved that yet, the changes. So our meeting schedule still started at seven o'clock.
Yes, all of our meetings on our city council meeting schedule are scheduled to start at seven o'clock. That is correct.
Okay, I just want to verify that. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. Councilmember Palito, any any questions or comments?
I have none at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, so I have questions. So the August 23 the I'm sorry, the October 23 meeting conflicts with a Cerritos Center for the for the Performing Arts
Yes.
event.
Correct.
Okay. And then the September 11 city council meeting, which is also on a Thursday, it conflicts with a city council event, a CCPA show. Okay. Okay. So my understanding of August 14, there is a League of California City, League of California Cities event in our skyline room on August 14, correct, city manager?
We do have a reservation for an event at the library skyline room, yes.
Yeah. So my understanding is that that event starts at six o'clock. And I'd rather I would rather have the meeting on August 14. Have our regular city council meeting on August 14 that starts at seven o'clock. And if any of the council wanted to go to the League of California Cities Women's Caucus event, they are able to do it from from six to seven. So so my my opinion is since there's an opportunity to to attend for almost an hour, I'd rather not move the entire city council meeting of August 14.
Understood.
And then I'd like to also discuss with my city council colleagues. You know, and I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it on here and I don't I'm looking at it on here. Is the Christmas tree lighting on here? In exhibit one, city manager?
Yes, if you go to
Remember what? Oh, December one. Okay, thank you, thank you. So I'd like to give our residents and visitors patrons of the library, patrons of our city and use like our CCPA and our sculpture garden more time to appreciate the holidays in our city of Cerritos, including the Chris, the beautiful city of Cerritos traditional Christmas tree. And the city for for many years, maybe decades, would have the Christmas tree lighting on the Monday before Thanksgiving. And just recently, it was no, it it has not been on the Monday before Thanksgiving. It was moved just recently to the Monday after Thanksgiving, which shortens amount the amount of time that our residents and visitors can celebrate the holidays in Cerritos, including celebrating and seeing our beautiful Christmas tree here in our civic center, especially when it's lit at night. So I'm gonna make a motion to move it to the Christmas tree Christmas tree lighting ceremony to Monday, November 24.
Second.
Well, I'm gonna make that motion. Well, give me one second, but you're gonna second it. So we're gonna do these one by one then?
Yes.
And we're not gonna do one combined motion. We'll do them one by one. So we're gonna help the city clerk have clear instructions on the changes of the schedule by separating them up.
Thank you.
But I wanna confirm with Mayor Protem Johnson, are you okay with keeping August 14
Yes.
as a regular meeting and not and not changing it, not moving it?
Yes.
Okay. And and we should all, all of us, the five of us should consider attending the League of California Cities Women Women's Caucus event here in our skyline room on August 14 at six P M. Okay? And then at 10 to seven, we'll leave and take care of the city business in our regular meeting. So we're not gonna move to August 14?
Correct.
Okay. So my first motion that I made was to move the Christmas tree lighting ceremony in the civic center from five to seven P M. Move it from December 1 to Monday, November 24. I got a second from councilmember Palito. Thank you for your second. And can we vote, please?
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, council colleagues. I appreciate you. Okay, does anybody else have a motion?
I do.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yeah, I'd like to move to cancel the October 23 2025 meeting and in lieu of conduct a special meeting for Monday, October 27, 2025. And to also cancel the September 11 meeting and in lieu of conduct a special meeting for Monday, September 8, 2025. And I want to ask my council colleagues if for these two special meetings, if we can have a start time of six P M.
I make a friend. I offer a friendly amendment to keep it at seven o'clock.
I point out the six P M time because the next day is Tuesday. And I'd like to get our staff home early in time. It's still part of our trial of moving our meetings to six P M.
I point out that moving it to September 8, some of us will have just been coming back from a California Contract Cities Fall Education Summit. That's from Friday to Sunday, September 5 through September 7. So we will have come back from a conference weekend. So that's my thoughts. Maybe we can consider one at seven o'clock and one at six o'clock, but not both at six o'clock.
Okay.
I'm just offering a friendly amendment.
I accept your friendly amendment to have the October 27 2025 meeting to be held at six P M. And that the September 8, 2025 meeting to be held at seven P M.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you for your friendly amendment.
Can I can I say something?
Here, councilmember Hong, feel free to make your comment.
Yeah, I just, you know, I I understand why I were making all the changes, but I just I feel like it would be very confusing for a lot of residents because they there are a lot of people are complaining. They're very confused with all the changes and all the timing. I I understand originally, I do agree that we can move up to six o'clock. But I do hear a lot of comments back from the residents saying that, you know, they're used to for so many years, over 60 years, they're so used to
Councilmember Hong, I hear you.
Seven o'clock, sorry.
City attorney, can I can I offer council member? Can I offer the mayor Protem another friendly amendment? Am I still able to?
Yes, you you can do that.
Okay, I make a friendly amendment that these two meetings that we are changing to accommodate the schedules of the city council. Can we please, please have them at seven o'clock?
I I also want to point out that this the city the city council meeting, since we've been incorporated, we have changed, I guess, the charter nine times. They've moved meetings. Twenty? Many times, many times they've changed meeting days, changed meeting times. It's not unusual to change a meeting date or time. We're still in the initial phases of trying to see if a six P M start time will work. And I think that you you and I have had discussions on it and you completely agreed with the six P M change time. Nobody likes change.
Can I offer? Can I offer a friendly?
I'm still talking.
A friendly amendment?
I'm still talking.
I'm hearing you.
Nobody likes change, but if we're gonna move forward, we gotta test out some of the changes.
Can I offer a friendly amendment?
And I want to point out, no, no, I'm not done with it. I want to point out that a six P M start time does not disenfranchise our residents. By the time we get through invocation and pledge of allegiance, presentations, it's an hour in already till we get to public comments, which would be seven P M. So we're we're not disenfranchising our residents. We're letting us do our work here and so that they can come in and even speak earlier. But if they feel like we're disenfranchising them, then maybe we move the public comments at the end and they can wait till the end and make their comment. That's a thought. But right now, I still want to test the waters to see if six P M is a doable time. And I've already accepted your friendly amendment for September eight to leave it at seven, but I would like to try October 23 at six P M.
Can I offer a friendly request to bifurcate your motion into two motions? The first motion is to change the two dates that you are moving to change and the second motion would be to start it at the start time.
Okay, I accept your friendly amendment. The motion then now is to have a council meeting on October 27th and a council meeting on September 8. That's the first motion.
But that's a
I accept the friendly amendment as
Thank you.
maker of this or as a second to the motion.
We are going to discuss the time and and make a make a vote on the time.
After this.
Second, right now, we're just selecting the dates.
Okay, the dates are fine.
Okay, then let's vote.
We're only voting on the dates.
We only vote on the dates, okay.
My second, oh.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. My second motion.
So we just approved moving the October 23 meeting to October 27. And and in that same motion, we also approved moving the September 11 meeting to September 8.
Thank you.
Now, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
And now I'd like to make a second motion, which is the October 27 meeting will have a start, a special meeting. It's a special meeting where we can change the time. October 27 special meeting with a start time of six P M. And the September 8 meeting with a start time of seven P M.
Okay.
If I could have a second.
Respectfully.
Respectfully, yes, what?
Respectfully. Do I have to? Can I make a substitute motion now or do I wait this? Do I? Do I have to wait for a second?
No, you would
Just say no to my motion.
No, because I just want to get to the final result.
Uh, there should be a second and then you could make your substitute motion.
So i- is there a second to Mayor Protem Linda Johnson's motion, which I respect her 100%? Is there a second to her motion?
I'm second.
Thank you, councilmember.
I make a substitute motion at the start time of the September 8 special meeting of the Cerritos City Council and the October 27 special meeting of the Cerritos City Council, both start at seven o'clock P M.
Wait.
Second.
Okay, let's vote.
Wait, what happened to my first motion?
Your first motion is the underlying motion, the substitution, the substitute motion goes first.
Correct, correct, correct.
So the second one is Mark, we do point to that one, right?
So let me clarify this. This is only the for this two meetings or is
Correct.
ongoing?
We're only talking about two meetings, two meetings.
Okay, the reason I know I used to sympathize, I say, yes, I agree. Mayor Protem's like, we should start at six o'clock. But while I hear the comments back from some resident, I am I have some second thought because they are thinking, oh, we're doing that just we're not trying to let them have to come to the public comments in time. And I don't want the resident to think this way because we don't have that kind of intention. And I don't want them to misunderstand why are we moving up the the timing, you know? Because we're moving the dates, we're moving the timing and they feel like they're very confused. They feel like, what are you council trying to do? What are you guys trying to do to us, you know? So that's just my thought. I know Linda, but like you can't believe it. But thank you, that's I just want to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, I I I like, I'm almost ready to call the question, but you can make a quick comment.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember say?
I think order not really confuse the resident. In general speaking, in common practice in most city and the district, in general speaking, they start with the close section first. So six to seven o'clock, you should six without change the resident's schedule. And could ignore into them, probably they get used to it. If we change our practice six to in the future, six to seven as a close section because you do need to come out to report what is a close session discussed about it. Then seven o'clock, you start your your regular council meetings. I did some study on the local cities and that's how they practicing it. I don't know, maybe just recommend for the future. I mean, today is really it is six o'clock and seven o'clock. It really doesn't bother me. But I think what Mayor Potting has mentioned about it was the holiday, the the day before, the day before and the day after, people can go home earlier, I mean, without staying late. So that was the reason I supporting her. I I am really confused the date and time anymore. I'm asking my council members to reconsiderate among each others and be flexible. I think Mayor mentioned that very well. We need to work together and we need to be flexible. If just one time, it'll go. And I I this is my thought. Thank you, sir.
Okay, let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of three to one with one abstention.
Thank you to my council colleagues, Mark Palito and Linda Johnson. I appreciate you two for voting with me on my substitute motion. Thank you, you guys.
Because I'm flexible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Mayor Protem, I appreciate you. Okay?
I compromise.
You you do.
I do.
You're the best Mayor Protem on this city council.
Mr. Mayor, may Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Okay, councilmember Palito, you can please make a quick comment at 11:07 P M.
That's called a pause, okay, because I'm gonna take my time. Look, I I respect the desire to explore change. And tonight was a great opportunity for that. I'm also a creature of habit. It was quite difficult for me to get here for six o'clock because I'm quite a busy person, as I I think a lot of people are. I would also think that we could cut down on the amount of time that we do spend at these council meetings by having good, robust conversations outside of council meetings that are in a full accordance with the Brown Act. So if there are some other tweaking that needs to be done So if there are some other tweaking that needs to be done to how we conduct our business. I would hope that we would try and. Accomplish that among. Cordial collegial communication between. Council colleagues. But this was kind of interesting, you know, to to see this. But not at eleven o'clock. I don't, I don't want this to go past midnight like we did for very good reason for the first five, six meetings. So I'm gonna cut it short here. But. Yeah, I I hope that we don't. Spend. More meetings tweaking. At the very end of the the meeting. In an un-agendized way, I, you know. Yeah, this was on the agenda, but there was a lot of things that got added into this conversation, I think unnecessarily. Just speaking from the heart. Okay? But I do appreciate at the end that there was some willingness to to accommodate the other. That's all.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, council member. And former Mayor Mark Palito. Good. Comments, good comments, thank you. The next item is item ten, city manager, do we have any legislative items?
No, sir, we do not have any items to present under ten A or ten B.
Item eleven A, does the city manager have a report?
No reports this evening, sir.
Good answer. The next item is eleven B. I'll start with Councilmember Say for Councilmember. For City Council Communications.
And while I visit.
Councilmember Say.
No, this is about eleven o'clock, I want everybody to go home early. I will report the next time.
Councilmember Hong.
I'll report next time too.
Councilmember, thank you, Councilmember Hong, Councilmember Palito.
Ditto.
Thank you, Councilmember Palito. Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Defer my report till the next meeting. But I would like to make an announcement. We'd like for join the city of Cerritos. National Night Out at seven P M on Thursday, August seven at Heritage Park. Meet our first responders and enjoy a free summer concert. Classic cars and public safety displays. Information about crime prevention, disaster preparedness, neighborhood watch and the volunteers on patrol will be available. National Night Out.
Anything else, Mayor Pro Tem?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. So. We, the the city of Cerritos. I I. Would like. To continue the good work of this city council. Being a business friendly. City council. A pro-business city council. And support our property owners as well. And. The city of Cerritos. Has an ordinance. That regulates self-storage businesses. It more more precisely, it limits. Any new self-storage businesses. And I understand. That. From information I've researched that there is. Positive value to having self-storage businesses in the city, just like there's positive value for numerous other businesses. So I asked for council consensus. To agendize at a meeting. At the August fourteen meeting. Which is seventeen days away from seventeen days away. To agendize. A report. To review. And consider. Amending the city of Srito's ordinance. Regarding. Self-storage businesses, including. Removing the limitation on any additional. New self-storage businesses.
I concur.
Okay? Okay, we have council consensus on that for an August fourteen. Agenda item. Can that, can that happen, please, city manager?
We can present information on the existing ordinance, there is a process that would have to take place if the council wants to make amendments so we can get. Preliminary direction. That process, because it's in our development code, the the process would require planning commission and city council review subsequent, but. We can present what's currently in our books and get preliminary direction and then come back.
So the planning commission would have to look at it. And if we give that direction on August fourteen, they could look at it at their September meeting?
Potentially, depending on what else is on the agenda and how long it would take to prepare the appropriate information.
Please plan. For. The direction of the city council on August fourteen. To be on the September planning commission meeting.
And we can, in the August fourteenth report, we can outline what that timing looks like.
Okay. Next. The city council. Received a, an informative. Detailed memo. From. The city. In with with information about sister cities. Of the city of Cerritos. It described. The actions the city council has taken, the Srito City Council has taken. And the actions of specific council members that they've taken. To. Create city sister city relationships. Over the years with the city of city sister city relationships with the city of Cerritos. My understanding is we have approved. No less than three sister cities. And city council action. Was taken to approve those sister cities. City council members. Visited those sister cities to develop that relationship. So I am asking for council consensus to have an agenda item. On the September fourteen city council meeting. To present. At the city council meeting for the public to hear in a transparent way. What is the status of? Basically, the information on that detailed memo that was provided to the council. To share all that information with the city council in this public. Arena. So the residents and viewers. Can understand. The sister city relationships of the city of Cerritos, do I have council consensus?
Yes, I concur.
Okay, so let's have that on the August fourteen city council meeting. Lastly, I'm concerned, I'm very concerned. That. Our city council chambers. Are not accessible. To. Our residents. Who have disabilities who are. Have mobility issues. Have accessibility issues. Personal accessibility issues, they have mobility issues. I'm concerned that we're not doing everything we can. To make our. City council chambers. Fully. Accessible. To everybody. Who wants to attend. Our city council meetings. And all the other meetings. That occur in these chambers are our commission meetings. And our committee meetings. So. I would like. You, city manager, with your staff. To consider everything within our control. To consider accessibility enhancements. To make this chamber. As accessible as possible to the public. So I'd like a memo. Not a memo, I'd like an agenda report. In the future. For accessibility enhancements. Proposed accessibility enhancements. Accessibility enhancement options for the Srito City Council chambers. Do I have council consensus?
I concur.
Okay. Thank you for letting me ask for those. Consensus items and now we're gonna have three agenda items. The first two on the August fourteen city council meeting. The accessibility enhancement at at your earliest convenience, city manager. Next on the item is item, next on the agenda is item twelve, city attorney, will you please announce the closed session item?
Yes, we will now adjourn to or recess into closed session to discuss two items with the labor negotiators with respect to AFSMI Local six nineteen and the full-time exempt, as well as discuss one matter of potential litigation.
We will now adjourn the special meeting and the council will recess to closed session. Thank you to staff and thank you to the city council and thank you to the residents, good night.